Supervisor, do you need to replace? I plan to use the fire. The United States of America and to do it locally. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We have some good news today. I know everybody's excited about that because we don't get that too often, do you think? So first of all, we want to recognize the two SMPTD scholarship recipients, which are Keely Wiggins and we are waiting for the second young man.
He's walking in the door now.
Walking in the door now. And his name, which I had to study, is Qualeep. Qualeep Kyle's. Qualeep Kyle's and he gets a presentation. Thank you very much. Wow, wow, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, we're gonna do this one at a time. You just had me. We just had me saying. Thank you so much. So we can do it one at a time so that we can keep our distance. And the board would like to congratulate you with the SMPTD case, Keely, Keely Wiggins. Keely's Wiggins, Keely's Keely Wiggins, if I'm all speaking the name correctly. And her mother is safety officer for District One.
Yeah.
And we watched her grow up too. And congratulations on behalf of the board supervisors, the SMPTD Development District, which is right back there. Y'all will come up and stay separated as good. Um, we are pleased to award you with that thousand dollars for the fall semester and you are going to be attending Sun Coast Community College. And what will you be attending that for?
I will be going to JD to do nursing. I'm gonna get my registered nursing degree and hopefully do that for us in my life.
That's wonderful. She'll be at the tradition's new facility, which we excited about. So on behalf of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, I thank you very much. I could give you hugs and whatnot, but I guess that would be great.
No thanks.
Y'all turn the foot.
On behalf of, well, I read that. Thank you. Congratulations. And now, don't leave, that's your pretty face. One more. And now, Qualeep. That's very nice that you asked me. And are you the father? No.
That's Qualeep.
That's Qualeep. Oh, there you go. I got my own amazing smile. Hi, Qualeep. It's nice to be on. And congratulations to you. And you will also receive the SMPTD Board for the scholarship for one thousand dollars for your attending the fall in the fall. And it is an academic scholarship with excellence for your activities and also for your determination. So on behalf of Harrison County Board of Supervisors and SMPTD, do you want to come on up here?
And this follows the District One representative.
Yes, I'm sorry. I let you out. He's a representative of the education. So congratulations to you.
This is one's guy.
It's a thousand dollars. I haven't got any comment. And I've, I know again, take your hand and all that, but know that I feel bad. And I hope you understand correctly. Thank you so much and congratulations.
What pardon?
Architectural engineer. There you go. Thank you.
Y'all so much. Taking very little to that one. Yeah, no surprise why.
Thank you. Thank y'all. We have to have everyone leave now, I'm sorry. But, uh, we're back down to ten of you.
Thank you.
Y'all want to move to number two, ma'am president?
Uh, we are going to move to the fire chief, which is not only a ten, we're gonna have some. For the most important section of the district to hear from our fire chief, Council.
Good morning. And I have Deputy Chief Schultz with me.
Gordon Hayes.
So yes, ma'am, we do have some good news to share with you this morning. We are, um, we have just gotten a letter that North Wool Market, Quavas, Sosher, and Lazana has had another reduction in our fire rating. We've gone from a seven to a six in our rating now. As each one of you knows, every bit of that reduction is sent back to the, uh, to the residents in tax savings or insurance savings when they get a, uh, a reduction. So we've been working hard and I can tell you this, Chief Schultz can answer any specific questions. He has become almost a subject matter expert on the rating bureau for us. And we have got people out there, our men and women, our employees, our firefighters, are the ones that are really doing the work that comes to, uh, that we have to do to make this come to fruition. So I can't say enough about our guys. We're going out there and they're having to check hydrants and do training and do things we've never done in the county before. And they're doing an outstanding job. And subsequently, we're moving forward. You guys have supported us 100% and have kind of challenged us to say, what can we do to, uh, to make this better? And because of that, we are better for it. So thank you, Giselle. Do you have any question for Chief Schultz? He's here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm, thank you so much for this. This is going to affect everyone in those areas and where their insurance go down. We really appreciate that. We want to make sure that we notify them somehow and let them know, make sure they tell their insurance.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get that word out there. Jeff Clark, our PIO is wanting to work with us on helping get that information out there. The other thing I want you to make sure that you understand is we're not stopping here. Six is good. Um, five will be better. If we can get down to four in some areas and we think we can do that, then we're absolutely going to continue to move forward and try to get that. So we're not done. We are still gonna continue to work hard because the five really starts in your business and your economic development and some other areas. The, uh, the six absolutely, everything from the six absolutely helps the, uh, the residents and the five absolutely helps us towards the economic development. So do you have any questions, Chief Schultz?
I don't have any questions.
I think interesting note is we're the first county to have a six across the North River Green District and incorporated area to the first county in the state.
And I can tell you this, almost every day now, we're getting calls from both places that are saying, um, you guys are leading, leading the, uh, the challenge of reducing this. How are you doing it? So, so it's recognized across the state. Thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
Would you add to this instruction that the homeowners should contact their insurance agent to advise them of the right reduction? That way they'll take care of the form, add that to the notice so they'll understand that it's not automatic. All you gotta do is call your agent.
That's an interesting point. Maybe we can also, Jeff, maybe we can put the letters on the county website. They actually print that letter out and send that to their.
Agent.
Yes, yes, sir. That's part of the statute, visiting statutes.
And you can also reach out to most of the agencies and make sure that they know because they're gonna get barraged with a hundred files and, yeah, to be ready, it'd be better for the insurance companies to take the proactive approach. And I just want to take this time to say, you're an amazing man. Everything you've done, your hard work, your dedication.
I wouldn't go that far.
It is. It's truly amazing. And I want to thank you for your service. He was a medic in Iraq and, uh, so we're happy to have you.
I'd like to second that emotion.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
I know, um, since the Obama medic days when I was.
All gone.
Black, blue, and white. Starting out.
Thank y'all very much. Yes, sir.
Forty-six years moving down. Amazing. I didn't think I'd live that long. Thank you. So I thought that it brings some good news, so we'll let that come on the agenda early. And now we're gonna recognize, uh, Mr. Dallas.
Maria.
I'm sorry. Maria, I'm sorry, but this, this.
Maria Dallas.
Maria Dallas to discuss the glass claim and as you damage this in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty dollars of income expenses, Safe Life out of glass data, accident number two, first complaint, the claims investigated by District Four, San Antonio.
Now you might want to ask him.
Can we answer?
Ms. Bradlin.
Ms. Bradlin. Ms. Bradlin. Ms. Maria. Yes, ma'am. Is, uh, is this line coming up to the code of the case in this town?
I'm trying to think of who that is.
Just, uh, we can't, you give it, uh, your humanity and your address for the record.
Okay. Maria Dallas, eighty-four sixty-four South Carolina Avenue, twelve forty-three nine five zero one.
Let me explain, uh, your situation.
Um, one morning I was coming up MLK Boulevard, well, MLK Martin Luther King was up there and as I was driving up, it was the bottom side of the road, I was weeding and a rock swam against my windshield and it cracked it like pouring all the way down. I ended up contacting the city because I thought it was city workers, but that's not identified. It was the county and I contacted the county.
Um, Tim, did you investigate? I guess we need to hear from Ms. Bradlin. Ms. Bradlin?
Yes. I did. I called, um, after Mr. Jones had, uh, called me the Friday morning, it happened Thursday. So I investigated, I talked to, uh, Fizell McGee asking whether they out there Thursday on Martin Luther King Boulevard, he didn't say yes. Then I contacted Dallas and she was telling me that she thought it was the city when she called the city. Um, and the city told me it was the county, but so I asked because it happened like that morning. She contacted Mrs. Jones, like, was identified, so we were all going home. So I contacted her the next day, Friday.
Did they, did they have signs up?
Yes. Once I got past where he was weeding it, there was a sign on this side of the road saying watch out for moors.
But it was after he passed.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Dallas, is it your front windshield or the back windshield?
My front windshield.
And if you don't mind me asking, why would a windshield be thirteen hundred and fifty dollars?
I like.
Because I get mine for two eighty.
Right. I like the lower floor myself. I have a two eighty on my left floor. They said that because, um, the cameras and stuff that, that shows on the windshield, like it shows like the speed and all that, they said that that's why it's cost so much. And it has to come from Honda. It can't be like, you know, just a off, off the wall windshield. I was shocked and I couldn't like.
Yeah.
Is that the heads up display?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have, excuse me, did you have insurance?
Yes, ma'am, I have insurance.
Did you file under your insurance?
No.
That reduces that bill substantially.
What, if I file on insurance?
I mean, they don't, I mean, I had my windshield broken this past year. You know, it would've cost me a thousand dollars because it has all that stuff in it. But it was, it only cost me fifty. I paid fifty. I don't know what the insurance company paid, but I guarantee they didn't pay a thousand dollars.
I have a five hundred dollars deductible.
That doesn't apply, that generally does not apply to windshields. So you mightn't even file under your insurance first.
Ms. Bradlin, did you have a chance to check the weed eater, see if all the safety features were still on it? I didn't because it happened that Thursday and I didn't know if I found it Friday. Still needed to check it. Making sure that all the safety features were still on the weed eater. That's correct.
Ms. Valander, I did check.
Were they?
Yes, all the guards and everything's on it.
Everything was properly on the weed eater.
Yeah, yeah. What about, what about the signs, Tim? Well, the signs was up. They was working away from them, so they was in the general area.
Yeah, most of the time their signs are up because they know I'm gonna look and see if the signs are up so we can avoid things like this.
But it was passed after your.
Yes, ma'am, when I saw the sign, it's, ma'am, my car was hit, he was on this side of the road and the road was the sign was on that side of the road. And I don't know why he was like eating on the side of the road like, like it wasn't like by the grass, it was kind of like by the street.
What happened in the city?
Well, the reason why we were in the city is because Martin Luther King leaves direct from both of my centers. It goes direct, I have the friendly center as well as, uh, the D C center. So from time to time, you know, the city has their utility service, we have their, uh, lawn care service contracted out. And they don't get their office and we would like, so it's been something that's been kind of passed down through the last couple of supervisors that just on that street and it looks bad. If you got thirty minutes of time, just reed it so it doesn't look bad when you're going to one of those stations. That's why they're there.
Tim?
Well, my recommendation is that she should submit it to her insurance company first because that does two things. It's just like your medical insurance bills. When you go, you get your bill for a million dollars, but when you submit to the insurance company, it reduces down to a hundred thousand dollars. So if she submits it to her insurance company first, I don't think that, under my policy, the deductible did not apply to the windshield claim. It was a fifty dollar deductible for windshield. So if you submit it to your insurance company first, then whatever, you're out of pocket. But I think if the signs are not in place, we've been over this number of times, the signs were, I know, but they were, they gotta be where they're working so that motors have an opportunity to go in different directions. If they choose to do so, if they choose to proceed where they know there's mowers, then they're assuming the risk that a rock can be thrown up or some damage, that's just a road hazard. Uh, so I would recommend that she submit it to her insurance company and see what they'll pay. And if they won't pay, then come back to the board and get something from them writing and says what they will and wanna pay and the board can consider.
If she has a five hundred dollar deductible, would we pay five hundred dollars?
The board has decided to do that if it chooses to. What, what happens that concerns me and I'm not getting on the, my windshield was replaced by the same company, first replacement. So I don't, I did not see the bill to the insurance company, but I know my windshield, you know, they told me that it was over a thousand dollars because they have all the gas inside the windshield nowadays. I don't have a heads up display, which has all the sensors and everything. So I know it was more than that because they told me, but they, they, I had to pay like fifty, I bought some windshield wire for two, so like sixty-nine bucks. And the insurance company probably paid a lot, yes, two or a hundred. And so it reduced that bill just like your medical bill does. Insurance companies make deals with these companies. So they handle thousands and thousands of windshields and so they reduce the price. And that's what's important about it. And it doesn't raise your liability rates on when you do that on windshield claim. The most expensive part of insurance is your liability where you get somebody else involved, not where you have something happen to your home. So it's a minor thing they handle routinely anymore, but marketing tool for insurance company. Do you know what insurance you have?
I have Safe Life. And they got it like two, almost two months ago.
That's all right. I mean, I almost got a report that day.
I don't, I don't have a report.
And you do.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We have a report and we give you a copy of it. If they, if they deny the claim, then, then we can look at that too. I understand hurdle level, but the county's got a dilemma too. It's one of those things where we.
Yeah, insurance.
Stewards of the taxpayer's dollars, you have to be concerned about.
Did our insurance person, did you have the, the pad?
Yes, I have the pad.
In fact, if you go back to Safe Life, give them your insurance, they will file a claim.
I just wish somebody would've told me this, you know? I've been waiting for two months to, somebody should've just like, well, filed insurance because I wouldn't have just stood around, you know? They offered something here, yeah.
I don't know why Safe Life, why did Safe Life not ask, did they ask you for your insurance?
No, they, I told, I went to Safe Life because they told me I had to have two, um, two folks. I went to Safe Life and I went to another place.
What did you tell her you had to have two folks?
Ms. Patty.
Or did Ms. Patty, so she's the one that didn't tell you to file your insurance?
No, then somebody filed insurance and I had been dealing with this, you know, like I said, for two months. So I didn't know, I wouldn't have just went ahead and did that, you know?
Yeah, we're sure.
And now I'm here and then, you know, if I have to come back, I have to take off again, you know?
Hopefully you won't have to come back. The board, the board's heard your testimony.
Can we do a motion to, um, you shouldn't have to come back. Can we do a, can we do a motion to pay the difference after she files the insurance? Is there a way we could agree?
Yeah, I think the board, the way to adjudicate the claim, the board will agree to pay what the insurance does not cover, which will potentially cover the whole thing.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, look.
Discussion.
Discussion, if I may. Today, correct, what, what people are getting when they report these investments is, uh, insurance people, there's an implication that we're gonna pay it. If they're telling you to file, they're telling you to file, well, if somebody tells me to file, I'm, I'm under the assumption it's gonna be paid. I think Tim has made it clear about the legal problems we're having with this. And I've got some issues with it, no different than getting a pothole, uh, you know, I, I, in the sense that if, if it's not, if pothole's not reported, we're not aware of, we're not liable for it. And there's this implication, I think, they're being told to call the insurance or whoever they call it, the courthouse, they tell them, well, you have to file a claim and all this, without them knowing that there's serious issue that we might not pay this and we have not.
But our insurance, like, Patty should provide you five hundred.
Oh, have you had the windshield replaced?
No, I haven't had it replaced.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
I can't afford it.
I'm with you. Look, I had the same thing when I told you. What, what you probably need to do is take it to Safe Life with your insurance and see what they'll do. Because you, more than likely, they'll say, I sat down and waited forty-five minutes, they replaced my windshield, charged me sixty-nine ninety-five, we tuned it and enjoyed.
Second, the insurance.
I know, but the insurance covered.
First of all, the insurance.
What I'm saying, her insurance made this cover right then and there. And so, uh, you know, we won't have a problem at all if she's out of pocket sixty-nine dollars, she just gives us a cover, so it's a check.
Where are your receipters turned back to?
You can, you, do you have an email?
Yeah.
I'll give you my card.
And I'm sorry, it happened in the city, it was the county, we didn't, it wasn't, there was a breakdown in communication and we apologized for a lot of this. So we were trying to figure out who's gonna be responsible for what and then we have a legal responsibility and all that kind of stuff.
I give you my card and you can just email me with the results of it. I got an order with my wallet this weekend, so it's a little bit damp.
When did you speak to Ms. Denafield, our insurance lady? This, uh, because this is a closure of final to the claim, this is from Angela Thrash. I'm just curious, who, who did you originally reach out to?
Well, I went to Patty, Patty wasn't there yet, so they sent me over to Angela. And then when Patty came over, her and Angela talked and then I went on my way and then I had to just email them, you know, the stuff.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You know, we probably oughta develop a form that they can fill out.
That's exactly what I was.
I could do that really easy and I'll do that, give it to Patty, click them out. I'll fill this form out and we'll make it clear that.
Make it easy.
But it, but as Marlon said, we're, unless, you know, like, can appeal it, but a lot of times we're not, it's also for anybody.
Well, in, in this case, you know, Tim, we, we have to, the purpose of the signs is to warrant people so that they can decide, so the sign's not where they can.
But I'm talking about other cases.
I understand.
So to give everybody a.
Where was the sign?
Sign or weirdly.
She said it was after where he was moving, so you didn't see it till you got there. But they're moving, I assume.
Yeah, but they, they used to have a call out, they go up there on Martin Luther King, they have signs all the time on Martin Luther King. They're on each side, I'm pretty sure they had signs out there.
We didn't, we didn't notice that, we don't know that.
No, I couldn't investigate it because it was my next thing.
So you don't run that.
It was just one side, it was just right there and like I said, he was over here and the sign was up there.
Didn't you see him?
Did I?
I mean, before you got there?
No, it's like, it's like he was walking and I was passing and like I said, I wouldn't even be here if it wouldn't have ran all the way down a windshield. Dude, it's a crack, you know, we do crack all the time, but I'm talking about it literally running all the way down, I thought my windshield was gonna shatter.
So that's all you wanted. Tim?
Yeah, I think a lot of this, and like Lisa said, a lot of this on our end of it is after the fact. It was a day after, um, it was a couple of days after once I was made aware of it. I spoke with Mr. Jones and, uh, Fizell McGee and everything of the proper ways, how we have to handle the city. I think, uh, Mr. Kent, you're gonna work on that and, uh, so that's where we are. Like I said, everything's pretty much just after the fact with this. I would say that the board will go ahead and approve the claim so per submitting to the, per insurance power that occurs. I tell her that she can go directly to Safe Life, call and make an appointment so you not have to wait too long. They will get on your insurance and we'll figure out what will be covered. They'll figure all that out for you and replace your windshield and the board can.
Can I ask that my question?
You can give me a report.
In further discussion?
And I'll report to the board, so you guys gotta come back and we'll figure it out from there. You've got my email and phone number if you need to call me and figure that out.
Question second, in further discussion?
And I'll report to the board, so you guys gotta come back and we'll figure it out from there. You've got my email and phone number if you need to call me and figure that out.
Question second, in further discussion? I would have favored C five, I say nine. I oppose, but she carried. Thank you. Sorry, really.
I just think that we either need to start paying them or we need not to. I'm getting tired of this. Some getting paid, some not getting paid.
She really doesn't need a report. When you go to Safe Life, oh, you're gonna do this, so here's my card, they take care. I won't tell Dicky Dunaway, I said that.
What I'm saying.
You're on the air right now.
Dicky, I didn't say that.
What I'm saying is we need to make our minds on how to like, make sure that no road hazards damage people's cars or not. This, this concern each one and, and this technical, the signs and all that, I have a problem with that because we don't know half the time.
That's right.
And it, it, I, I mean, I think we need to make, like we used to do, we used to pay them all, no questions asked. They didn't even have to show up.
At all.
And then we didn't pay any of them. So this board needs to make up their mind exactly what we're gonna underwrite or not.
Well, I don't think we can leave and just pay all of them.
What we're doing, we.
We have to adjudicate, now this board can make a decision to allow somebody else to adjudicate, present a recommendation to the board and board to adjudicate that way on individual basis to, rather than having an actual hearing.
I just want to know if we're gonna do it, if we, if we're not.
Well, it's hard to see in a crystal ball, I mean, if you've got a case by case like this case, it appears to me that we're.
If we're gonna make a decision where the signs are at or not, let's do that. If we're gonna make a decision on some other reason, then, you know, but I'm just, we've denied people, we've denied people windshield and we have, we've paid some. I'm just saying that we need to make a decision what we're gonna do.
Policy. Okay, but number three, we recognize David Hardy to discuss natural restoration.
Good morning and thank you. With me this morning, I have Christian Floyd, landscape architect, and, uh, we'd like to do all my some comments. I think Christian's gonna weigh you on anything I'll leave out. So, um, off of a little background, as a practicing architect, you might think, what interest is David Hardy having here in San Beach? And it is my observation as a lifelong student of the coastal environment to recognize the challenges that we deal with in our location. And in my view, I think we have some ongoing problems with sand erosion and the inevitable renervation project that will come every six, eight years. And a observation that by moving to a more natural approach, this management in San Beach, that could be mitigated. So, and in particular, as an example, uh, I've referred to Miramar Beach, I call it Miramar Beach, Miramar Sand Dunes. That particular area, um, Dr. Pete Melby started a project in nineteen ninety-six, uh, to do a natural beach restoration project in a location. And he produced a report in March of two thousand nine that basically, I'm just echoing And it is my observation, as a lifelong student of the coastal environment, to recognize the challenges that we deal with in our location, and in my view, I think we have some ongoing problems with sand erosion and the inevitable renervation project every time, every six, eight years, and a observation that by moving to a more natural approach, this management in San Beach, that could be mitigated. So, in particular, as an example, I refer to Miramar Beach, I call it Miramar Beach, Miramar Sand Dunes, that particular area, Dr. Pete Melby started a project in nineteen ninety-six to do a natural beach restoration project in a location, and he produced a report in March of two thousand nine, that basically, I'm just echoing what he has in this report, and observing that we need to do more of what he recommended in this report. If you look at what has occurred at Miramar Beach post-crystal ball, it performed remarkably well, that area, you didn't see the erosion, you didn't see the sand on the highway, and I would observe, we should have more of that. And I'm aware as well that the county has a Corps of Engineer project that's in the wings, I talked to Chuck Lawfus about this, and I think that project's a little over a million dollars to do additional sand dunes, sand dunes that as I understand, cannot be connected to any of the existing dunes, they need to be in new locations, so we're seeing the same thing, the value of sand dunes in creating resiliency and sustainability for beach. So, and so, okay, we're all for that, and everybody I've talked to says we're all for that, but you have to recognize that the raving of the beach anywhere near the dunes, it doesn't allow the dune to grow in an apple fashion. So there's a fetch area that associated with each dune, that is the distance of land that the dune grows from, grows from the sand. When that sand is raked, it exacerbates the erosion of the sand, so it's not in keeping with what's recommended in Dr. Melby's report. So, that's the big picture, and what I'm suggesting to you as leaders of our county is change the management structure of our beach to say, okay, let's have a greater percent of area that is natural, still have the areas that are manicured, if you will, dedicated to tourism, and the high traffic areas near the hotels, and I would also submit that those areas that are natural are a tourist attraction, if you walk the area on the shore side near our beach, it's, it's transformed, it really takes you away from highway ninety, you no longer hear the traffic, you don't see the traffic, and to me, it provides the bar coastal highlights, it really gives you a different experience, and there's value in that. So not only do you have the value of that asset that you've created, but you also have greater resiliency to storms.
Mr. Hardy, have you ever seen this?
Yes, I have.
I'm rather aware that Dr. Melby had input on this.
Yes.
That we are following this plan, and we are putting the dunes back where as he suggested, and Chuck Lawfus has done a really good job, in my opinion, following this, and so this is not something new.
That's right.
That you've come up with, this was done in two thousand and eight.
Yeah, he was not saying.
And we are following it pretty much to the T, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
So, I'd ask Chuck the question, speaking of Miramar Beach, and what's different about that area, and what Chuck shared, well, we don't rake that area. And so, if you do less, you get more, and to me, it just seems like a logical conclusion to allow those sand dunes to grow.
Simplify, simplify.
I think, David, if I'm not mistaken, what you're basically saying is, let nature take its course. Are you saying that in fact, like with the storm debris, when, not necessarily all of it, but basically leave a lot of the storm debris that in the last, top of the storm we had, you allow that just to remain, that in and of itself will ultimately create the dunes?
It would reestablish a beach area.
Yeah, it, it, what you're saying is, basically let nature take its course, and if you let nature take its course as opposed to these plans, you'll get the natural dune, is that what you're saying? That's what I read with what you submitted, that's kinda what I got out of it.
That's exactly what I'm saying, and the knee-jerk reaction post-storm, why did this beach cleaned up?
The one knee-jerk here is.
Well, no, no, no.
Let me tell you why I was thrown out, because I got at least thirty phone calls from these hotels and beach managers, whose livelihood depended on getting that beach cleaned up, and it wasn't what you saw, it had snakes and rodents and animals, dead, alive, who knew that it was in there, and it went out another, what, ten, fifteen feet in the water?
Twenty, thirty yards.
Your painting is not what it's gonna end up.
No, no, no.
How far out did it go?
About twenty, thirty yards out in the water.
Out into the water. It's a tourist place, man, we couldn't let that sit there like that.
I surveyed the area from Broadwater to the Coliseum, and that was one of those areas, it's a real thick mat.
Yeah, we also have White House Theater, did you see it? Did someone get a picture?
Yes, and, so, so I'm not saying that our tourist areas should not be cleaned up, what I am saying, we have twenty-six miles of beach, and you could have more focus on those tourist areas, and have designated natural areas with signage to let folks know that you're entering a natural beach area, and that you should bring proper protective equipment to be in this area, just like you would in any of the Gulf Coast Islands, so there's no difference in that. It would just greatly reduce the expenditure of maintaining the beach.
The difference, sir, is that this beach is man-made, so that sand is not one of these barrier islands, that sand was put there on purpose for man, it was man-made, so I hesitate when I hear people compare it to an island, one of the barrier islands, because it's not really comparing apples to apples, in my opinion.
If I may do, I've been, you know, mutations, I've been about thirty years with the beach, and back when Jeff Taylor was there and all that, he helped, we helped put this thing together, and we've tried those things, and we have a little bit different perspective on it, because of the fact that we have upland owners, and they have complaints and expectations about what they wanna see, and we have tourism, we have the animals, and the lease terms are taken, how many miles are the lease terms now using?
Well, before the storm, they had probably almost three or four miles that was under protection with the birds.
So, if you, and we have the drainage and the things that we have to make sure that we maintain as far as the drains soak, we have taken a lot of this in perspective, and I would love to, you know, put, take it under advisement and look at it some more, but I just, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's anything new.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
It's just something that we have tried to adjust to and work along, as kind of blowing sand, I'm gonna let Chuck take it forward now.
Well, let me, let me give you, the area where David is talking about, Miramar, the seawall drops down to almost a zero at that location, it doesn't have nine and thirteen steps like most sections, so there was a big issue at that location, that small section, so that's why the board allowed that back in the time for them to put this, this project together, and it's worked well in that one location, because like I said, the seawall is almost to a zero, there's only two locations like that along our beachfront, right there, and then there's one on the other side of Broad Avenue, other than that, the seawall is high enough that we don't have that issue like you do down there, Miramar.
Yeah, it's, he used to call. But basically, we are using Pete's, he had a trough idea, where you dig the trough, we are using that, aren't we?
Yes.
So maybe his idea is where we dig the trough, and then the sand dunes are on the other side, and then the seawalls on this side, so therefore, where you have a protection, because the sand is so light, it comes in, sweeps up, it comes, falls into, what it can, falls into the dunes, and then it falls into the trough, so that seems to also help, I'm , if you're aware of that.
Helped, yeah, I'm very aware, and that's what was so dramatic for me, because I lived on Miramar Avenue in nineteen ninety-two, I moved in before they started the project, watched it take place, had many failures, things we tried that didn't work, but seeing it now, after twenty years, it's stunningly beautiful, and all I'm putting forward is, that's a good thing, and, but the resilience it gives, you have to think about that, and there are other areas of our beach that certainly could stand it, and so.
I wanna put pine trees, I can move out to the side. That's just me, I find palm trees on the beach, I'll pine trees.
And then, yeah, so I wanted to follow back up on the point of, everyone thinks it's all man-made beach, and Dr. Melby did the research on that, Long Beach was named after the natural beach front that occurred there, so the entire beach is not man-made, a big portion of it was pumped in to protect highway, not only protect the seawall that was built, but we do have naturally occurring beach, just wasn't a continuous beach like we have now. So, that, that was revealing for me when I read this report, and, anyway, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that he didn't say in his report, I'm just seeing the value of doing more of it.
Well, I think the board is open to taking it under advisement, we appreciate your help and your suggestions, and we'll just see that and discuss it, if that's all right with the board? We thought I'd say a thank you.
No, I still think you got it all.
And spend millions to keep sweeping it along.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, dear, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, do you have anything?
No, we're always here, I'm good.
Well, I regret inviting you, I'm sorry. I mean, he's just a concern, says, and truly is an amazing architect, wants it to be beautiful and save money and do its best for nature, it's not fighting nature, what's the use of flushing money down the toilet to fight nature instead of work with it, but that's just my opinion, I'm sorry, I'm basically just.
My suggestion is let nature take its course.
Okay, we have, uh, number four, if we, if we, if that under your box, we think we're discussing, are you thinking about it, did you talk to Chuck about it, because I think there's some there, but at the same time, we've kind of been down that road before, and it's been working out for us real well with the constituents and tourist people.
Yes, recognizing like Ford, to discuss preservation of art, he has three to five minutes. Three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes, five minutes to back. Just so listen, there was also a lady wanting to come in and speak on this topic, I thought this town was alive.
We're not going to do this, you cannot do it.
Making sure you don't.
Thank you.
Nice, pretty nice.
Thank you, do please state your name and address for the record, in three to five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, the board appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Ford, I live out on Muck Ridge in Sosa, Mississippi, I'm a lifelong on and off resident of this county, now, the thing I wanted to emphasize is, the removal of public art is, in my opinion, and many of the people I've talked to, constituents, kind of anti-American, un-American, I want to tell this board, this weekend, a church was burnt to the ground, two hundred forty years old. It is gone, in California, it is gone, all their artwork is gone, cannot be replaced, because some very evil person had an agenda to destroy said thing, now, I want you to keep in mind that this public state, this place is a piece of art, now, I am an artist myself, I don't plan to be a great artist, but I do have a degree in Western Mississippi, studied at Bill Backwood, and I think it's very important that we're not fooled with this and leave it alone, first of all, it's not yours to move, it belongs to this county. Excuse me, oh, this, sir?
Piece of art, speaking out.
Sir, I'm talking about the monument in front of ours, one of them, yes.
Me too.
It's a piece of, yes, it's a public work of art, imagine that, it is a work of art, it picks a man, a human being. Now, a lot of the people I spoke to are servicemen, they're not pleased, and they had told me to ask you, because they're at work, to please, don't be hasty, remove, remove this piece of artwork, and I'm only an artist, because I'm an artist, that's how I see it, it's been a hundred years, it has, since the dust of time, hurricanes, single wars, if a minority, an American minority is offended by it, tue back, the Constitution does not guarantee not to have your family served, okay? And I admonish you, and I was bothered, I heard a note talked about how we're gonna protect this piece of artwork, after we move this, what I heard, now, I may be wrong about the notes, what I heard, but that's what I heard, this is the worst time to do this, people are saying art destroyed by maniacs on TV, another time, maybe come to discussion, this is not the time, now, the thing that I want to emphasize is, this is an attack on Western culture, that's what this is, I'm gonna call it way it is, Western culture is under attack, does it have a right to exist? Does it? Yes. Yes, there's faults in Western culture, but it deserves to be defended, because that's who we are, Western culture evolves around one man, the pinnacle, the focal point is Jesus Christ, so this is an attack on Christianity, in my humble estimation, you don't have to believe in Jesus Christ, you don't have to follow Jesus Christ, but that is the pinnacle of Western civilization, now, I urge you to uphold the law that the state put in to protect these monuments, now, I have a personal friend who was, his death is five years this Thursday, and he paid with his life, he was in Birmingham, defending a monument, a piece of art, because people back in twenty fifteen were yelling, let's take it down, I'm bothered by it, and he was run off the road in Northern Mississippi, and he's dead, his name is Anthony Herbie, he's a deer friend of mine, okay, he's a black guy, by the way, and he said, Michael, I'm an American, I don't wanna hear this, that, the, I'm an American patriot, and he's gone, his death will be five years this Thursday, and that agrees with me, now, I'm sorry if I'm energetic, but this is very important, because once the line of the West is gone, it will not return without a great deal of blood and sacrifice, okay? I don't wanna go down that road, I'm sure my fellow countrymen don't wanna go down that road, but if we are forced down that rhythm, then that's how it's gonna be, people are tired of this, okay? They want to live their lives and raise their children as they see fit, okay? We have some other issues I need to discuss with you, we are slipping into a depression, this woman twenty-nine looked like the Cape Guard, I'm talking about a lot of people laid off in this county, because we're not gonna have the money, we're gonna have the revenue to give y'all to take care of things, okay? Now, you can believe what you want about the numbers, I'll be glad to discuss this at another time, now, apologize for my zeal, but that is what I'm thinking.
Perfect timing.
Thank you, Madam President, um, yes, now, ma'am, please call, I'm not a bad guy, I'm very energetic, I promise, you know, whatever, whatever you've heard or known, or anybody, I'm just a regular guy trying to take care of things. Yes, please, have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Thank you for your patience, consent agenda is agenda item number five. Oh, number four, this board wishes, one board member wishes to move Mr. Woody Bailey up from forty-seven on, and that, do you have a motion?
Motion.
All post-motion, thank you. Number forty-seven, and that'd be Woody Bailey.
Yeah.
He has an important case, he's got like. He also gets a report easier. And I'm, sir, please state your name and your address for our record, please, and give us a report.
Okay, Woody Bailey, one five two nine, Ninety-Eighth Street, Goff Field.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just saying briefly, can you pack it, if y'all had a chance to look at it, our letter request, this is our newsletter, which is actually gonna go up in the hands of everyone today, the next item is, the documents that are on our website, that are loading trailer storage and already, has, has a paragraph, so that's what's on our website, then our RAC card, and our synopsis on the funding, and what we're doing as far as the economic impact, and our program from last year, so just wanted to tell y'all where we are today, what's going on, and appreciate y'all's consideration, y'all supported us in the past, and hopefully y'all will continue to do, do that as well, we have thirty-seven hundred, a little higher than that today, we had a number of registrations come in over the weekend, so we're thirty-seven hundred roughly today, that's about seven hundred behind where we normally are at this point in time, and we've only had a request for less than ten refunds from participants so far, that newsletter that you see is our real big push for registration, and our pre-registration ends August fifteenth, so these next few weeks, we're really have a lot to say about, you know, how our turnout's gonna be for this year, last year, we had eight thousand six hundred and twenty participated in the event, so we're still in pretty good shape, I think, you know, we are seven hundred down, but we're continuing to move forward, that's thirty-eight states and Canada that are represented at present, so at this point, our plans are move forward, and we're hopeful that by October, the event's fourth through the eleventh, we'll be able to, you know, to do the event. at this point, our plans are move forward, and we're hopeful that by October, the event's fourth through the eleventh, we'll be able to, you know, to do the event like we're going to do. I think the economy is going to, going to definitely need the event this year, and I certainly hope we can, you know, make it happen, so.
One correction, um, I think we increased the RV spots to twenty five dollars.
Right. It's coming, but, uh, Greg is going to send us some, uh, new artwork to put on our website. So, yeah, we'll do that as soon as we get that from the records.
And I think last year, we involved ninety six hundred dollars with the RV spots. But ten thousand, I want to bet some.
Right.
And I want to, uh, no, where you got that picture of.
Yeah, number twenty.
Page twenty two, did I sign? My rights, do you use my image?
If we're in trouble, let me know. But where is it, right? You see it.
You should have put the Beach Boys. I would have put the Beach Boys. You should have put the Beach Boys with me. That's, that's the stars. But it must be made in page twenty. So I need to bring up the C word. What's the COVID plan? Do you, do you think we're going to be able to move forward even with this?
Well, that is our plan. In, in the newsletter, we've given everybody, uh, some of our pre-planning as far as what we're going to do. For example, on Monday of Cruising the Coast, we hand out over, in the past, we handed over three thousand packages of registration on that first Monday. And what we're doing is, we're doing like the DMV, we're going to, we're going to divide everybody up alphabetically. So we're going to start spreading, spreading them out. We're bringing in, uh, double amount of hand washing stations that we don't want to have for the event. Uh, we're going to have our, even our portlet people coming in and sanitizing on a more regular basis, uh, than we normally do. And I expect that, uh, I don't know what may happen down the road, but, um, I'm looking to put together a plan somewhat like the casino operators did to present to the governor as to what we're going to do, and I, because I have a feeling that will probably be the, the, the authority that probably stops us, uh, as far as, you know, making this a loud event to, to, to take place. And we're going to outline all the measures that we're taking, what we're doing, signage, things of that nature. You know, fortunately, uh, we're forty miles with the event between Pasadena and Bay St. Louis, so that's spreading people out a lot. And the hotspots are that registration day, uh, Coliseum, I'm already scraping the coast to see how Matt handled the Coliseum, was scraping. And, um, and then in some of the, the, the towns, Ocean Springs and Bay St. Louis seem to be somewhat popular. And we're just going to work with those various cities about spreading people out and making it work.
That's the same in Long Beach, too.
Long Beach is a big, um, night, that, that Monday night for the parade, uh, you know, with the tip tops playing there, that's always been popular. So, um, you know, th- those are, but, you know, but the vast majority of cruising are people cruising up and down Highway nine, so, uh, so we'll, we'll see what, you know, what happens if we're able to make the event happen. Uh, with our participants, as far as, we only had less than ten ask for refunds. We're giving them their full money back. And, uh, we haven't adopted that policy yet for sponsors as far as the board is, you know, as our board yet, but that's what we'll probably do. That's what we did in Katrina. Katrina, yeah, we gave everybody their full money back or gave the opportunity to roll it over to the next year. So that's what we're probably going to be presenting to sponsors or people who invest in the event.
So I was just going to ask you, so on this request, if by chance you don't have it this year, Tim, could we roll over this sponsorship for next year? Would he have to refund?
The only thing that would be a problem is, is when is the next election? When it will be an issue is.
Three years from now.
Oh, so it's three years. So, okay, so probably it would be no problem if it's the same board. Don't y'all agree to that? You could roll over, argue that it's refunded and refunded. You could keep, make them give it back and then refund it.
Well, the number here to make a motion to do the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Knowing that we received ninety six hundred back in half a time, or back in RV sales, or several advertising.
Uh, the only thing you would have is a budget issue. I haven't thought about it. Have you budgeted for this year? If you roll it over, you have credits. It wouldn't budget again, so you create you a budget issue in, in the sense that you budget.
So they may have to refund it and then we have to put it back on. So, you okay with that?
Sure. Probably better do it that way.
I want to have a motion.
I recommend it.
A motion of the second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in thirty seven five percent out? All opposed? Motion carried.
Well, I for one sure hope you have. I sure hope you have.
Oh, I do. I mean, you know.
As y'all know, we're a non-popular organization. I mean, the whole point of this Cruising the Coast is to have a, an impact on our economy here in slow time of the year. And that's what our board wants to do. So we're going to try to make that happen if at all possible, and just see, you know, uh, that's, that's the other thing.
So most of the things in Congress anyway, with the exception of registration.
Well, registration, when they get out of the government, you know, you see the schedule, they have all the planning, we got entertainment all around, everything.
Also encourage, it's a great, it's a great beginning. I look forward to it. But I noticed you stated you would have extra hand sanitizers direct location.
Extra washing stations.
Is, is there any plan of putting some masks in place if everybody doesn't want?
Well, what we're, what we're doing, we didn't think that, you know, we could provide masks for all of the participants. And we were asking them to take them, their own personal responsibility to use their own mask, their own, you know, hand sanitizing and that sort of thing. We're doing all of our volunteers, which we have around seven hundred or so. We are going to be providing the volunteers with masks and, and, uh, proper PPE equipment for them in various jobs that they're dealing with. But, uh, as far as the general public, we're asking everybody to take, you know, their, you know, their own responsibility for them, their own personal protection, so.
Well, we have a motion with second and hint discussion. I'll vote with one hundred percent approval, so thank you so much. We appreciate what you do.
I appreciate it.
I'm smiling behind this.
I'm glad you're. I look forward to seeing you. I appreciate it, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I put it, put it. This is, this is one from last year.
What are our calls number ten? Or do you have any calls number ten?
About a thousand.
How much?
More than a thousand.
Do they pay for it?
No, but, uh, they don't pay, and we're paying that, we're paying that overtime call.
Should us bring in some tourists then? Okay, under consent agenda is, um, I just would have to.
I just curious, I should ask Woody. Um, so I'd like to know what the city is contributing. I wish that I asked him.
Last time, if I remember, he said they contributed equal amount.
Did she do that?
That's my, that's what I remember him saying last time.
They don't, they get women. They're live and dying. They can't share.
Cruising the Coast.
That Cruising the Coast doesn't pay any long.
Yeah, so, no problem.
Yes, ma'am. Um, President, can we stop just a moment because the live contributor just went down. Yes, ma'am, we can. Uh, we need to, you know, where.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we, we tell them to come.
When they want to go to surgery, I think.
Yeah. If we could go ahead, then it's the consent agenda that's placed on the agenda.
No, I would, I would give you recess. You can.
She said when that, she's back in the hospital.
You know, the sand, you've seen, I know there's also where they have the slatted fences. That also kept the sand off the highway. That sand piled up behind, it's weird how it does it.
That's where, that's where they're going to plant the, uh, the slatted fences are to create.
But it's weird that the, the, the claw fences, I don't see, I don't know whether they get blown down or what. They don't seem to do the same thing. The, the slatted fences stayed up in the sand. You could literally see this hump of sand around everything all the way down, and it was not on the highway.
And then when that gets built up and they'll plant it so it stays.
Well, if you, if you want to kind of see an area where it just returns, make, let next, uh, go down there. Long Beach, close to Pasca Channel, where the pine trees are ruined and all of that kind of stuff. You can't even see, you can't even see the.
I don't like the pine trees either. You know, down there, uh, what do we do, man? I guess we, those condominiums are on the point down there, going like to that.
Yeah.
Is that maintained that?
Yeah.
We keep that.
That's the best place, have condominium, because it's almost like a private beach. Nobody else goes.
It's absolutely beautiful.
It is.
It's one of the prettiest views in the whole.
It is.
And it's funny, you go down there, those people care with us about the ordinances and laws that we have represent the beach. They get.
They're all everywhere.
They bother them.
Every time I pull over there.
Neither side.
It's always the same beach.
Yeah.
Will you pick up after your dog?
That, you know, that's probably something.
They weren't even. Sorry, I didn't realize you got people.
There's a lot of people. I mean, you got them like a dog. But it's hard to get in there and kill people. And I think probably a couple of weeks ago, I pulled down there and there was a, a young girl and mom. They had a dog. I said, I saw it. She had a dog.
Yeah, sure.
So they loaded it up, and the girl, little girl started crying. I think, my God. That's any word that's a job. They don't, they don't like that level of vigilance, vigilance.
But you know, but you talk about narratives. They, they, they're really concerned about dogs, some people, because of disease from the, the, from the feces that they positive in that, on the beach, and you feel, humans do catch.
There's some people that pick up, most don't.
Yeah, most people are not.
I just don't want to be running, sit in.
That's what I'm talking about.
I step in all the time.
On city. City. You have a lot of them. You're going to have a lot of them.
Legs are key. It's about, it's about a quarter mile, four man.
Thank you.
It's all right. Maybe later.
Uh, your phone is, Tim, your phone is, is, uh, buzzing.
I don't know. Get over it.
It's honey. She not going to get over.
She, oh, wait. Other day, she called out right in the middle, trying to meet the deadline, you know, like, you're just like this in your computer, you know, it'd be done by five o'clock. She called, starts telling me what one of her buddies had told her. I said, can you wait until I get home and tell me that? You never want to talk to me. I'm working, trying to meet a deadline by five o'clock. I was in trouble when I got home.
Well, my ass, you guys won't tell the whole story, like, well, so and so is leaving. Where are they going?
Yeah, I don't know, like.
Why are they leaving? I don't know. I didn't ask. They didn't volunteer. I didn't ask them. Why didn't you ask them? Well, I, this wasn't my.
Yeah, oh, I get that. That's what I tell her all the time. She says, well, you don't know very much. Well, I'm sorry. I don't want to go. That's not my business, what they're doing. No, I remember everything I do.
Did they get?
I have my husband have called me this time.
I don't know. Did I ask him how it is?
What is Tim talking about?
I'm always talking about it, you know.
There they are.
We back this over again.
Really, can you tell, can you tell the, you can have that.
Hey, John. He way back.
Okay, good motion come out of the re- recess.
Motion.
Motion. Second, discussion. All those in favor of signature by my side, I'll post a motion. Under agenda number five to ten, we have placed an agenda, consent, uh, agenda signed here, very kind of non-controversial matter. Uh, moving all supervisors, you know, I think.
Motion.
Second, second discussion. All those in favor of signature by us, and I'll, I'll post a motion here. Under, excuse me, number eleven, the tax assessor is owner of the board acknowledging receipt of clean and real property, personal property assessment role for the second and first, I'm sorry, we went backwards, first and second, um, judicial district head of Kansas City as presented by the tax assessor, first section thirty seven, thirty one, thirty five, age one, District Code of seventy two, and a tank of motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion. All those in favor of signature by my side, I'll post a motion here. Order approved by Indian County Travel and Parks Department of the Tax Assessor's Office as listed, motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion. All those in favor of signature by my side, I'll, I'll post a motion here. Number voting is ordered, acknowledge the seven, three, four, decreases to the twenty nineteen real property rule and, and, uh, as recommended by the tax assessor, motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion. All those in favor of signature by my side, I'll, I'll post a motion here. Order approved by the county's office, motion. Second, second discussion. All those in favor of signature by my side, I'll, I'll post a motion here. The executive contract listed of the Fairgrounds is approved by Ray Whitfield, Fairgrounds Director, Office twenty eight, twenty nine, twenty twenty for Robert Seshar, Deep South Classic, Goodwin, Neat Show, motion.
Motion. Second, discussion. Will this new governor's order affect it, Mr. Holland?
I think all of the, uh, police should be able to tell the attendants that, so they should comply with the governor's orders. So the only effect it ends up on is whether or not they comply with it or not. Ultimately, that's their responsibility.
I want to make sure this Whitfield has copied the latest order. Like his governor's order.
All of this, they must have the provision about they must comply with the governor's orders. So the gov- new governor's orders, this requires masks. I think they were going to post it on the website, but you'll have to check.
Okay.
So the people had access to them.
Are you aware of the new rules, regulations that.
Yes, that mastermind order.
And, uh, it's in the twenty.
Ten indoors, twenty outdoor.
Okay.
Tim, even though that's in the region, does the county assume any responsibility for, uh, as a lease saw to, for the, for example, like civic centers, uh, or any other, or grants facilities? If people exceeded and we're knowledgeable of them exceeding that twenty, and, uh, do we have any responsibility to?
Well, I may, I may, you know, can't ever say ever, but, you know, the way we drew the addendum was they would hold harmless and identify the county on any, any claims that are made. Now, does that mean the county may not get named if something were to occur? No, that, but, but the way we drew the addendum, and the reason we did that is to try to prevent that exact thing that says that we're, we're just leasing the old buildings. It's your responsibility to comply with whatever order is on the county. Now, if we intentionally allow them to violate the order, could there be a potential?
Or if we knowledgeable of them violating.
Well, that's, if, yeah, if you allow them to permit them to violate the order, then the county employee could be negligent. And therefore, that falls under the Port Claim Act case that we could not, you know.
I just want to mention, if, if the owner's on Greg or any other county employee that if, if, that this, we, uh, leased the fairgrounds and a hundred people show up out there, what responsibility is the owner's on Greg to say, I'm sorry, y'all are going to have to clear out to no more than twenty?
No, the way we drew it is not to be, for the county to be responsible. Can't ever say ever. So that doesn't mean the county may not be named in one of these claims. We just have a defense. Now, if we're knowingly allowing them to violate the governor's order, no worries, Greg, if they have a hundred people show up, it's your responsibility to go out and say, you're not complying with the governor's order. You're supposed to be. And you probably could even stop the event until they did comply, but I don't even, I, I, we've tried to draw it where the county wouldn't even take that responsibility. Because that's exactly what happened. They'll say, well, he just told us it was okay, or she told us it was okay, whatever event you're dealing with. And so the purpose of the way we drew it was not to have that, but regardless, we have a identification, a hold harmless agreement, and the claims made, we should deal, go after them. Again, that depends on who them is, whether or not you can recover. So instead of to have that defense just in case, with the limit of twenty at the arena is a difficult thing because it's an outdoor arena. I hate to say it, I'm not encouraging this, but you could spread twenty people a long way around the, around the fairgrounds. It's not going to be crowded. It's a big place. But I, you know, that's just one of those things that ultimately, we try to make it the less ease responsibility on the counties. We're just providing a facility. How they use it is up to them. In compliance with the governor's orders, it's up to them. And it means they may, if something happens, they may not make a claim.
You're not close enough to the microphone, Mr. Holland.
No, we didn't ever complain, they don't hear me, but that's okay. Uh, but I think you're fine. I mean, our, it's the best we can do in the circumstances, there's nothing that's written in stone.
Anything may change, though.
Yeah, things could get, works are better. If football season doesn't happen, we're all wrong.
We talked about.
Yes, right.
But what we wanna do, Marlon, is we also wanna make some, one of the things about ordinances in general, is making them practical where you can understand what, what do we want, Dollar General, okay? I mean.
That's exactly, I had to interrupt just to say this one time. I had to fight Dollar General to, on Highway sixty seven, to bring their sign down, like, and make it not high and, you know, unattractive. And the same thing on Highway, um, sixty seven, et cetera, where that intersection is, where everybody stops. And they agreed, but it was a long process that I had to go through because, you know, they had no leg to stand up, so I, I was just trying to talk to them and have the, the people that were doing, and they didn't have to do it, but they did because we kept talking back and forth and anyway.
And we got the summer ordinance for forty nine, sixty seven, so they complied with that, that.
I guess what I got, it kind of a bad taste in my mouth, this proposal signing on at that point in time, it's just, uh.
But, but John, if you look at other areas, if you go to Orange Beach, if you go down, if you go to Foley, you go to tiny, tiny little towns in Alabama.
Arizona, of social, of the deal.
But it's on its way here, and it's, that's the same thing they did, but anyway, go ahead, I'll, I'll apologize, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine, I mean, all I'm getting at is, we, we're not, we're, we're gonna bring this stuff back to you, and we're gonna make it practical, and we're gonna make it where people can understand, so if that person is coming in and building on two acres, then they know what we're expecting at the road. It doesn't make, to me, there's some things in the ordinance that don't make sense, like three hundred foot, you got three hundred foot out of frontage, and you gotta put a tree over fifty feet, when you don't even have water out there? They're gonna be dead, I mean, they, they can't comply with that. You're putting them in a disadvantage, just because they, they can't maintain those plants. So then you need to back off, it needs to be pasture land, and then you need to, they need to landscape up around a building, wherever they're gonna develop, you know, their property. So there's things like that that I think we can address, and I think we can create a happy medium between the two. Because we have commercial development, like Connie's talking about, that they're coming in and they just do whatever they wanna do, and they do whatever's the cheapest, and they can afford it, you know, but totally understand, I mean, the person that's gonna build a house, we need to be having some advantage to not clearing all the trees off your property too, though. We don't, there's nothing really in the ordinance that keeps you from like going and just clearcutting everything.
That's right, and I'm passionate about that, and it, within this eleven thousand four hundred and ten dollars, would you research our ordinances and also?
Yeah, we're gonna actually go out and take pictures and give you off some examples and.
And then advise us on what you think.
Exactly, and we'll come back with a tree pilot for, you know, and we'll come up with some different recommendations, and they'll be like, on a two acre lot, this is what you oughta do, you know, or.
So if a developer comes and buys twenty acres to develop, you would say the zoning ordinance, the tree ordinance would be X amount of trees in these areas?
Yeah, and then, well, I think one thing that you need to have some discretion with is that the planning commission, like if somebody comes in and they're gonna develop fifty acres, and they're gonna do a subdivision even, then at that point, they're looking at it, and they need to be saying, alright, these are the things we want you to do from a landscaping standpoint, and have some leeway to make it look the right way. I mean, you don't wanna require them to get a landscape architect, we're not expecting all that kinda stuff, but those are the kinda things that, you're talking about, Marlon, where they gotta go spend money to get somebody to bring you something that's more certified, you know.
It would be a tourist area, and you, we need to start having a little bit more pride and understanding, and if a tree, Marlin, will suck up, since you live over there, and Pastor Stan, it sucks up like one hundred, just eleven thousand gallons of water? I mean, and they come in and clearcut that and pay it, I mean, you got flooding everywhere, especially, no matter what you try to do, under the, under the ground, you still.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, we shouldn't let a junkyard come in and cut all the trees and, and on the roadside, I mean, you know, if they wanted to put in a road, so.
I don't think any of them oppose any type of reasonable, uh, requirements, just to be careful with.
Yeah, well, we can break that, we can make it, it's pretty, it's pretty lenient on residential out in the county, isn't it? I mean, it's one or two per one. Yeah, it's fine.
What they're concerned about, and I agree with them, because there's, there's another bill that's passed that required well for any, if you serve over, I mean, required going to public, public, so the well that you require for anyone that you serve over twenty five people, uh, is in a restaurant or a little get and go out in the middle of nowhere, um, is unreasonable, and they're finding that out, and I think they're concerned about those little mom and pop shops that will come up and be, and be burned with something they can't afford, but we're basically talking about big business that's on forty five, forty nine and sixty seven, the gateways into the Mississippi Gulf Coast and how they look, and that's my biggest concern, and I, you know, I go to other places and it looks gorgeous.
If we can legally focus on what she's talking about, I don't think, I don't think we'd have a problem with this.
With these big business on a small scale.
And Craig's landscape architect has, uh, we've talked about having illustrations added to his own ordinance so that people can see more than the legal ease that's in the regulations. And also one more request, please identify what could be a scenic byway, forty nine is a perfect example of that, so we don't do a blanket, and we're not nitpicking, and we're fair. Thank you. Six oh five and sixty seven are the two that affect us.
How is eighty three's, Brown? They got a lot of mom and pops, but, you know, they, they look, I, I just think we need to have that pride and sense and ownership of this, that's fine for you. So when you have a motion to, um, approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Only discussion I have, how could y'all get exactly four hundred and ten dollars?
You're engineers.
I just didn't, I heard a great deal.
Anything about, and I use a multiplier, that's probably.
All those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried. Are we on the air yet?
I'm rounding off, Marlon.
Yes, we are. I do. Thank y'all very much.
See y'all later.
Thank you. So we back, we are back on the air, and then the personnel or concurring with the county administrator, personnel changes, this is the number five, paper, and personnel department, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty two, this order approving claims as listed, and paying on the Georgia account, motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty three, is order approving payment on auto damage claim in the amount two thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars and seven cents payable to claimant Wanda Richnet, Brignet, Brignet, Richnet, uh, in, to be paid in Georgia account as recommended by Walt Warren, associated adjusters incorporated, motion.
Second.
Second, motion.
Did it help us get?
Wait a minute, wait, 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 motion.
Mr. Jones, bend the motion, Dr. Lattner, so.
And then discussion, I think, Tim fixing, isn't that the one we had to subpoena?
Supin, subpoenaing, they ended the settlement since the county employee was responsible for the accident, lady almost pulled all the way out of her parking space before he left his, so he hit her, and she actually stopped, and she, she was, she pulled out, and he just couldn't see her in the line, it's funny.
Where's it parked?
Um.
Engineer?
Was it engineer?
Is that what you asked him? What was I, what was I?
Yeah, what county?
I think it was a truck, I don't think it was sustained, hardly any damages, yes. It was, it was a bumper to her quarter panel, you know, angle, but she clearly had gotten all the way out of her parking spot before he backed them. She actually stopped, he just, it was a blind spot.
Good motion, engineer, second, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty four, order approving under purchasing, order approving subsort purchase of, uh, motion, uh, systems and software, equipment and extra as you have below, as a total, at a total cost of two hundred and nine thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, paid for one one eight dash, uh, one eight zero dash nine one nine. For the HAVA, H A V A, grant, this is, uh, approved, approved, approved purchase.
Motion.
Motion, second, second discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty five, order acknowledging seven, rejecting group ten dash four, regret, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, annual term bids as recommended by purchase clerk, and discussed with road manager, Mr. Paul Five, reverse option, um, ex, exemption during the twenty one, twenty two, annual, um, bids term as one, only one bidder just paid in the reverse auction, which resulted in an empty, high, proxy, motion. Second.
Second discussion, so what does all this mean? That we're rejecting the bid because we only have one, if you have?
Do we need to have funding?
No, I'm just, does that have y'all were taking this?
Well, they rejected that bid, and now they think because they only had one bid, and the bidder was extremely high, and that this would qualify for any objection and try to get this, uh, exempt.
Yeah, well, basically what happens if you only have one bidder, whatever the first bid, he submits, that which is probably high, that, that's what you're gonna get.
And they said it was exceptionally high. Okay. Okay, we have motion, and the second discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, under sharing link, as you share, the beds that you live in, the need to ask people, it's on the main person's, your mouth, and your hands, and your lips, so we do have discussions of an hours.
Uh, morning, four seventy one is where we at the jail right now, ninety two at the work center, total five, six, and three, thirty two misdemeanors, eighty five females, seventy six cleared federal, uh, state arrest, and forty four federal inmates.
Thank you, Jack. Under twenty, under any discussion or any questions to share?
Under twenty seven, uh, order approving mileage reimbursement for older, fellow, John, Kim, Kessam, uh, for May and June twenty twenty, and the amount of two hundred and twenty dollars purchased from Zira's Girl, dash, zero, two, that's, dash, two hundred, dash, four seventy five, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty eight, order, authorized board, execute quarterly reporting for December twenty zero two, is it twenty twenty seven?
Two zero zero two.
Two zero zero two, two zero zero two, share funding for the law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending June thirty twenty twenty, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number twenty nine, order authorizing board, president, keep the quality, the quarter, like, it's a, it's a quarter, like, recording for December thirty, sixty five, uh, share funding for the law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending June thirty twenty twenty, motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion.
Hey, when you don't rise after to see all this?
Once we get something around, again, that's still just clear. So it's pretty impressive, though.
It is.
If you haven't seen it, if you, if you, uh, you know, that's one thing I'll tell y'all right now, the, the red department has done a fantastic job, um, with this, and I think it was the, the smart thing for what we're trying to do is pinch pennies on this and save money and follow on and do this, it's, it's, they, they really, they've done a nice thing.
Thank you. Okay, the motion, do you have any questions?
Number thirty is order thirty to purchase two, everybody?
Yeah, it says, uh, no, I, I, no, I, you all across.
All those in favor, it's, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, is that me?
No, it says that the recording is low for all of you, but since you speak very low, just, uh, does not have.
Number thirty, order approving purchase of an automated license plate reader system from TCS Player Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and nine hundred and eighty nine dollars, as approved by the Information Technology Services Department from, um, project number forty five nine one one, purchase agreement CP dash one, two zero two, one, zero, 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 four, contract number IT, two zero two, one, zero, 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 two, payable from the Stone Garden Grant Funds Account Number Zero Three Zero Dash Two Two One Dash Nine Fifty, motion.
Second, just a, what, what is that? How is that, automatic tag reader, what is that, what do they do? I'm just curious.
Basically what it says, it's an automatic tag reader, so.
You mean a patrolman has it and he?
They have them on their cars on the interstate, and then we have station area throughout the county, so it's, it's vital for us to, um, we, we actually worked one this morning, um, where a suspect, an enamored assault, Carol Kelly, came down here, so we're trying to trace his tag, and I'd see when he crossed the line, it's very vital, and this is very, very critical.
George, would that be of some help to the, how it was killed in the red range? Or is it too late for that?
No, 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 we're, we're knee deep in the middle of that since that.
When you say not only in the cars, but in locations, how many locations?
Uh, good to give you a number, to be honest with you, you got, you gotta understand, different states are set up different ways, so Alabama has one, Louisiana has one, Tennessee has one, um, we have, uh, four, then I've got three units on the interstate that have them, um, the Idaho has them, Hancock County has them, Jackson County has them, so we're, everything's integrated into one system, and we try to do it. So if you get a, you get a stolen car, which we get, I would say daily, you know, on the interstate, then it allows the, the officers on the interstate to know what kinda car they're looking for, their dispatch, say a red Toyota truck just passed, Alabama tag reader, it's coming west on I ten, so they can see that truck, stop it, and get the suspect and arrest the suspect, that would be it.
No, it reads, it reads the tag, and then the computer shows up that there's something wrong.
Instant, instantaneous.
It's instantaneous.
The reflection on the tag hits it, it hits computers, it won't be.
And it warns them that this, there's a problem with that vehicle.
Yes.
It also protects our law enforcement, because like Brennan, you know, Brennan Hunter's father, you hit the law on a violent person, and he just did a regular stop, he had no way of knowing, so it's great because it protects them, but besides the cars, is it gonna be in loopholes? You said in other locations, am I not understanding?
They're stationary.
Stationary?
Yeah, stationary and.
But the cameras that you're.
But who decides the locations, I guess is my question.
We do, law enforcement on the coast side.
Move them around too, they're not stationary, that's, that's.
So you can.
Not, not all of them, we have some that are, that you can move around for different events, but the stationary ones are not being moved, they're, they stay right there.
They used to have a, a number you could call when people littered, and you could turn the tag number, is that anything like that, or?
No, because you have to sign the affidavit for the littering.
But that's a, that'll read all those cars going, uh, tags, those tags, good.
It's, it's, uh, Jefferson Parish, uh, Louisiana, holes, they've got most of the, uh, I'm gonna say it wrong, but most of the, um, IT data, most of the, we feed through Jefferson Parish, and they have a, a room set up there that's probably half this size, nothing but screens, and just phenomenal, really, it's just phenomenal. The information that you can gain on.
Yes, next, motion, and second, uh, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number thirty one, is order approving payment classes listed below, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, number thirty two, is order approving the only purchase of shares, uh, for, for the account, from, from the shares of their, for the account, motion.
Motion.
Second, second discussion, all those in favor signify by a sign, I oppose, motion carried, the county administrator is number thirty three, order, um, declaring the following vehicle asset number two three four seven nine two zero zero, uh, two three thousand and seven, Freightliner one F J A six C K four seven E Y zero zero four five six, as, um, surplus and donating same. same to City of Gallowayville, authorize the inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory clerk list. Motion. Second. Can we word that more differently? What's the name?
You might just say that, that.
Remove from, remove it.
No, no, yes, rather than.
Just say.
So the motion is second. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Wait, wait, yeah, I'll send you an email. I'm gonna go back.
Yeah, I think we have to evaluate almost.
Yeah, that's gotta respond to that. So we have to have some type of value. Can we see it, like, zero?
So just table it, and we'll come up with a value.
Come out, do we need to withdraw? Motion.
I think you do, because you're gonna need to.
Okay, number thirty-three, we have a motion, draw of the motion, we have second. Yeah?
Yeah. And I think you said last time at the meeting, it plus a ten thousand dollars, or something like that.
He did.
He did, yeah, that's right. And I'm just curious, why in Gallowayville? I mean, that's fine, but how do we decide who gets it? They asked, they requested?
They were borrowing.
They can borrow, man.
Gosh.
Timmy's got your name, Timmy's got everybody.
Yeah. I have ours for safe.
Right on. You're talking about, maybe they detected being out special. Don't get the top of the veil, I'm for safe.
Which is not a county car, by the way.
Oh, I'm sure.
No, I know, I'm just kidding. No, we designed it for the river.
Explain that supervisor powers, why they got there.
This is the truck we discussed last week, um, it's an auction truck, it's gonna go to the auction. I think we're getting these letters to move the outbuilds, putting it weekly now, so it's actually costing us, you know, time and everything. This truck is gonna go to the auction, so the value's under ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
For the truck. I'll, I'll, in that's talking to the auction, I had an auction that come down and look at what we have lined up. He said, be lucky if we got ten thousand, so.
So we just need a value, so we can approve that?
I would say nine thousand. I don't know, that's sufficient.
So if any man would.
Do it just on?
I think you do it based on this opinion, anyway.
We, we, based on that, brand manager's estimate, nine thousand dollars.
This is a truck.
What is that? Do you have second discussion?
This is a truck that we had bought, used, probably back in two thousand and ten, after they had flipped one of our trade functions, and we had needed it at the time, but this truck has over five hundred thousand miles on it.
Well, I'm sure that we have.
Is it a decent?
It is, it's a decent.
Just roughening.
A five hundred thousand mile, pretty much, that would be a decent.
Yeah, so that's, that's it.
And thank you for the work you're doing, Tim. Now, the training.
Sheriff was bragging, I mean, maybe you could take someone.
Well, tell, tell me more, Sheriff.
About there.
Tell me more. Thank you.
We have a motion.
Got the value.
We've had discussion, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried, good luck. Okay, number, number thirty-four, is order adding Karen Gorman, BMA, to the list of assistant receiving clerks and auditing, by saying motion. Second. Discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number thirty-five, is order approving income tax reimbursement with following employees. Motion. Second. Second. Discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number thirty-six, is order authorizing the inventory clerk to remove the inventory lost equipment from the road department acts attached police reports on file with the court. Motion. Second. Second. Discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Control, number thirty-seven, order authorize the reimbursement to road department fund one, zero, dash, zero, 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 dash, three, six, and report the following project. Motion. Second. Second. Discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.
I'm sorry, I did have one question.
Okay.
For the debris pickup at the fairgrounds, do we have any? Why does Karen keep walking out of the room?
Get, get Tim again.
Ask him this, come see it. He's very popular.
Yeah, I think we're good, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Week is done.
How much was the trash picked up?
That is a fence that they had tore down, that went around Levens property, fairgrounds tore down, uh, and they piled it up, and we sent a trash truck in to pick it up.
That was because of me, it looked terrible, I had nails hanging out.
It was a dilapidated.
It was so dilapidated, even when we purchased it, so, okay, it's just. Good question. Okay, the motion is second, I'll, we've already passed that. We've already, motion, most, like, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number thirty-eight, is order authorize the transfer in the amount of three thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars in sales from the general fund, zero, one, dash, nine, five, dash, nine, fifty, to the two percent unemployment comp revolving fund, one, zero, seven, dash, zero, 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 dash, three, eight, seven, to bring the cash balance to the required level. Motion. Second.
Second discussion.
Okay, you want to get Pam? Pam, sure.
I just wonder what this is about.
Pam? Are we on number thirty?
You explain, we don't have it.
Okay.
Number thirty-eight.
Number thirty-eight.
Why aren't we due in two percent?
That's our, our loan deposit bond, we're transferring money from the general fund, pay, that, it's held out on your payroll, so that's coming out of your payroll into that, got two percent, I mean, it's holders. Okay. Let me change the report, number thirty-nine, is.
We're done.
Yeah, we have an auction, second, a motion, second, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number thirty-nine, change request order, approve the payment coins listed. Motion. Second, I have discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. The board, order approving continuation of the continuation of the, of the local emergency, um, saving emergency, the COVID nineteen, as adopted on March fifth, twenty twenty. Motion. Second. Discussion. To be dead. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number forty-one, is order, uh, finding that the twenty-three, since the world has been equalized and authorized, the clerk of the board to purchase the proper notice advertising that the assistant clerk are ready to, for inspection by the public. Motion. Second. Second. Discussion.
And in the paper yesterday?
No, that was advising, not advertising.
My husband, President, this will, this will, to not say something to the board, since I do the tax hearings every year, the publication will be in the paper tomorrow, that is the covered date to file an appeal with the board, the form also will be online for people to download, to send back to us, and they have until the twenty-fourth to file an appeal to the board. They will be heard starting August the first, in the First Judicial District, well, August the third, actually, and then the Second Judicial Hearings will be the next Monday, in the afternoon, starting at one o'clock, and depending upon when we will, you know. So, so far, I've had mostly people from out of town, text, rip, and they've asked if they could do the video conference because of COVID nineteen, they didn't want to travel, so.
Can we do that?
And, uh, check who's IT, and yes, that's possible.
We know this, right?
Right. So this, that's where we're at right now, so I'll let you all know how many we had, and I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Holly. We have a motion, second, and further discussion. All those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number forty-two, is order acknowledging C-7, semi-annual beach inspection report for spring twenty-twenty, it's made by Brown, Mitchell, and Alexandra, incorporate. Motion. Second. Second discussion.
Yes, is Chuck gonna give us some kind of plan? There were several of these outfalls during the bikes that were landing, and we would.
Is he out there?
It's made, we need, we need something about it.
He's out there, he's still here, if you don't mind. But Chuck. Okay, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Mark has a question.
Bagging the beach inspection.
Yes, sir.
What's our next step?
Well, after all the debris picked up, we're gonna have to look at some, uh, the outfalls, we're having some major damage with the outfall structures, so that's something that we're gonna have to look at, possibly going for a grant or doing it in-house of some of the repairs, because they are getting in bad shape.
What is the inspection, what do they do, though, if they're not inspecting the outfalls in this particular inspection?
They do inspect it, outfalls, and they show us where they, where the ones that need to be repaired.
What needs to be greater, more detailed?
No, we just, they, to the point now that we need to go out and forbid and get the repairs done.
And the new ones, we've got issues with those new pretty white ones out there, too, is that not correct?
I haven't heard of it.
I saw them, did you see this report?
No, did they say something about?
Yeah, they got pictures and everything.
But I didn't know there was anything flawed in.
Yeah, some of the tops are missing, the square things are all broken, some of the, I call them, like, the manhole covers.
Right.
MIA, they got garbage cans.
Now, I know that's on some of the existing outfall, I thought.
Those are the new ones, the brand new ones. And the square thing, that's where the, the foil, I guess, goes, some of the tops don't fit, some I won't even own, and this was pre-crystal.
Yeah, that's correct.
These issues.
So then we probably have more issues.
So they probably worse now, is what I think.
Correct. So it's something that we're gonna have to get out.
But I'd like to look at this, because I know the city of Glucksie and the MR, and more, they're not holding up, we need to.
I'll get rid of, into that, I've run away from that.
Those white ones, that's a liability issue. You walk on, if you don't fix them, you don't respond to them.
And we got problems with some of the first new pictures.
And that smaller, less extended, we can, at the end of Calum, right?
Yes, sir.
Just as well.
Yeah, it's good as well, if we didn't have any damage from it after.
Is that the same material?
No, ma'am, it's totally different.
What type of material is the one that's doing wow?
The one at Calum, it's just a cover, and with composite material, aluminum, and then when the water comes up, it's detoxed to the outside of the flap, so.
So do they advise that we start going to something like that material, instead of the sole concrete, they just keep?
Well, they're talking about the concrete ground structures, it's, it's been there for fifty, sixty years.
I gotcha.
And the collars are getting deteriorated.
These are the new ones, by the way, the round, the square, and the top pillars are broken off, the, some of the, uh, manholes have disappeared, these are the new ones.
The, the older ones, the ones we did, the ones we did now, I mean, at Calum, right, it's just a simple design, it's very simple, it's, it's functional, it's easy to maintain and repair up, there's no extra, uh, drainage, the, you know, facility, that you have to maintain, basically, so it works out.
The way.
They're nice, the way ones are.
What the way did is they bind, like, three or four pipes to the water, they diverted a lot of the material onto the water, but I'll look into that.
Yeah, because that's what they did, when instead of having four or five of those pipes going out, they took them and put them in big, and then you.
But I know on some of the, the other regular square outfalls, they are having some issues with some of the manhole covers and things like that, but I wasn't.
I noticed, I noticed there's a lot of these cans sitting.
I'll look into that.
Before Chuck, before you leave, and I'm taking something out of order, it's coming up a little later, I.
Can we go ahead and vote on this then?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have a motion, second, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. All right, go ahead.
Well, we're coming up with the contracts, repair to Tim Simpson Pier, and I know it's a lot of, but why are you here?
Yes, sir. I, I got two of them, number forty-eight and number forty-nine.
All right, we'll just wait.
Would you like?
We'll just wait.
Okay, I'll wait.
But you can sit in here, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Number forty-nine, we wish to set up a number, and that number four, three, is ordered due payment tax sale, August twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, on tax parcel number zero seven, zero eight, A, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, zero, four, zero, 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 two thousand seventeen, taxes as bonus and, and aberration, avoid aberration, none?
Abenicio.
Abenicio, and for related purposes. I fight over that thing the whole time, I fight with it. The motion, second, discussion.
This was a double assessment, both city go for, the taxpayer paid the assessment, didn't get paid on the other one, we got solid tax, but shit, go for it, ask for it, if you were.
Motion, and second, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Under number thirty-four, uh, order of due payment of attorney Tim, Steve Holman, and voice, Holman Associates, Director, Supervisors, and Administrator, proceeds, proceeding style, uh, Brian Taylor versus Harrison County Assistant Office of Tax Assessor. Motion. Second. Second discussion, what, what is this?
Uh, it's a claim, it's filed EEOC complaint involving the Tax Assessor Office, other than that, we probably have to discuss, but session is more of the detail, but it's, it's not a significant thing, in my opinion.
Motion, second, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Uh, number forty-five, is order approving the request of Coast Select Association to use the gray rock parking area across the street from the Harrison County soccer fields on County Farm Road as possible staging area for their twenty-twenty hurricane season, and authorize the board president to execute the same, in a letter of agreement. Motion. Second, under discussion, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Under number forty-six, is order approving the paper of rental fees for the, the Harrison Civic Center, Long Beach School District, to host its annual superintendent academic awards reception on April fourteen, twenty-three. Motion. Second. Second discussion, all those who voted signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number forty-seven, no, forty, seven, thirty, forty-seven, forty-eight, is consider approving the beach outfall pilot project one, VO fifty-one, with receipt, and at Courthouse Road location, in Gulfport, Mississippi, is approved by O.R., and long-term, like you said, Harrison County Council. Motion. Motion.
Second discussion, Mr. Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So where are we looking at?
What they are planning is a salt marsh grass type situation at the outfall there at Courthouse Road, um, they're gonna divert some of the water that's coming up underneath Highway ninety, it's gonna be like a little village area, was, the grass is, it's gonna filter the water going out into the sound. We had some issues with how we were gonna clean it, so they changed their, uh, the whole, the design, and then we can go in there and clean the facility, so.
And who is that, and how much is it costing?
Well, it's not costing us anything, it's a, it's a D, Mississippi D, is doing this project.
It's not the Colosseum, I would have been in the maintenance and cleaning.
That's true. After is completed.
Is this similar?
Has trees down there?
Ma'am? No, no, no trees.
Is this similar to what we've, we've done before?
No, this is, this, well, this is similar to what's at Miramar, but, uh, it's gonna be a lot lower, it's not gonna be any trees or anything else, there'll be a wooden board walk, walk across, so you can still get over the top of it, going to the bond park bits where they're at, so this is in your district.
And, and I was gonna say, back to these, what are the pipes called?
Outfall pipes.
Outfall pipes. It's so beautiful how on Calum Rain you can walk over it and then we're gonna be doing the same thing, or if you're on the Gulfport. Would that be something we should explore to cover them, safety and beauty as well?
Well, this in Courthouse Road, we've had some issues with that one before. So there's gonna be taken out, but, but outfall won't be there anymore, the, the open channel that's there at Courthouse Road.
They're covered with synthetic boards.
Composite.
And so the problem with it is, is maintenance and keeping up with it, when the wave action gets to it, it kicks the panels up. So somebody can get hurt on it, it's a problem, but they tried to make that, I will say this, you might look, Orange Beach had a, they replaced, instead of the piers, replaced it with boards. I just saw this on their website. They replaced it with these panels that the water can come through.
I was saying that, it's kind of like a grate.
Their piers were not damaged hardly at all because the water was allowed to flow through and stuff. What happens is the wave action, it's one of those boards, it's not as loose. And you might check with Orange Beach and see what they did. I saw, I was trying to find it, I was talking. So the, the guy was commenting, they didn't have any damage, or very minimal damage because the water was allowed to come up through the panel.
Well, and that would be good for that beach in Long Beach, just that pier in Long Beach.
I'm bringing some issues up, just something to look at in reference to the piers, so Tim, you might be on some.
I'll, I'll find it, I found it, I saw it, I meant the, it was a couple of weeks ago after that last storm. They were just bragging about it didn't tear up the piers this time.
But here, and the one at Courthouse, they're gonna remove it totally, it won't be there.
Outfall, you mean?
Yeah, outfall, correct.
So what they gonna replace it with? This marsh?
This is marsh grass, yes, ma'am.
Could we explore his idea with Orange Beach and see about those grates?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll find it, I'll find it soon too.
Okay. Yeah, it wouldn't work on this location, but this is what they're talking about doing is having like a little bayou or something else in that area.
The only thing, if it clogs up, it's an backup water hole.
Yeah, it's gonna have some.
Orange, you had, there's gonna silt in that boat, Monch, I see a lot of issues with this quite honestly.
Well, they, there's issues at Courthouse Road right now because the, the boat ramp, people can't even use it because it is so.
That's what they're saying, it's gonna make it worse.
Well, the, well, you got that rock jetty that's gonna go to the side, so all this water flow's gonna hit the rock jetty before it gets into, into the boat channel.
That should help.
Did they talk to you about this before they brought it out of your business, or is this?
This was, this, this is something that's happened, it was at work fifteen years ago and it finally got permitted.
This is NDOT's doing it.
Yeah, NDOT and DQ.
And NDOT is the, the highway people.
Correct.
Now they're beach experts.
Well, they have proven like.
You gotta remember, that's drainage for the highway.
It's drainage for going all the way up to the railroad.
Yeah, like the highway guys, but what's it gonna do to the beach?
It's not the beach, so much as it backing up past that railroad track, the water's what I worry about.
Most of these outfall pipes are related to drainage in highway because they're, you gotta remember the seawall went there. When the seawall was built, they had pipes coming through the seawall out to continue to flow. Then when the beach was put in, they extended them out to where the drainage would go. That's where the outfall pipes come in.
At this particular location, they're gonna have a box chamber up by the highway, so in case water does start backing up, it's gonna overflow out onto the beach itself.
Rest of my face.
Yeah, right here it says anticipated sand, that sand level will be required from key areas periodically, especially after large storm events.
And it's gonna flood out onto the beaches.
Well, you, it's got, gotta go somewhere.
Well, it's congested, isn't it? Why are we gonna?
You got a pretty big nasty channel out there.
It's nasty.
Chuck, what's your, what's your take here?
At this location, since we've had some issues with that open channel, anything we can do to do a better job at that location, I think would be good. We're only talking about this one location, like Tim said, it is pretty nasty, but the way it looks now. We're gonna have to do some repairs on the walls because they are starting to deteriorate. So anytime we can get rid of an open channel, I think that'll be good. And then there's gonna be a wooden walkway going across it to get on the beach.
Where's this pavilion? Where's that?
Do you think this rock jetty will be beneficial to kind of?
The pavilion's already there. The pavilion's already there.
Where is it?
Right there, at Courthouse Road out there on the beach. It's a, it's a tall little wooden pavilion.
I don't guess that.
It's got a shade.
Real small.
It's small.
There's a couple of fire pits.
Yeah, I know, damn, but that's.
So they're gonna stay.
Right, it's not as small.
No, it's, it's really small. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna hurt or anything with the boat ramp whatsoever that's already there.
Does it take care of some of the silt that might go?
No, the silt's gonna end up through the south, from the south, so it's not, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to come up with a different design or put some type of rock jetty to keep the silt from coming in. That's, that's city of Gulfport, that's not ours.
This is the channel we had to clean over, the thing fell and broke the playbill, but it was one that cleaned.
It's not the one that ran the truck into?
No, no, you, you walked off into the, how he did it, I don't know. In the dark, you can see it.
I think it'd be a nice addition, I don't think it'd deter anything from what we have right now.
What if we put it out there and realize it's such a disaster, do we have the right to move there completely? I'll be stuck with it for ten years.
Uh, that didn't.
I'm still, they're gonna build it, they're gonna allow it to be a natural drainage.
Correct.
So I think if the board decided it was a problem, the board would have the right to maintain the beach.
And then, please, I understand service and all that, extend it to you if it breaks. However, they will immediately address that one.
I mean, ultimately, you got two different issues there. You got the highway and air and M D Q. But ultimately, this board has authority over the same beach or something. If it's the same beach, the board has the authority to maintain it and do what's necessary, so. They may not like that, but I mean, the difference between the, as I understand what they're doing, it will create a natural drain with salt grass and things like that.
Correct.
But probably aesthetically better than what you're looking at now. Whether or not it clogs up.
We had one down there in your district, when they diverted a pipe and had some salt marsh grass, it didn't work, so we put the pipe back like it was. This is a lot bigger than what you were talking about.
That's what I kept saying, I know we have a.
It was like, it was like a little sixteen or eighteen inch pipe, this.
Eighteen feet wide.
Eighteen feet wide, total channel.
Right now, that's like probably fifteen foot walls, ten to fifteen foot walls, one foot square, spreader veins.
And crawl.
Keep it, keep it flat, you know.
Just like Calum, a little bit there.
Bigger, this is the biggest one, I think, actually.
It might work if it's something concrete, something like the end of Calum.
Well, do you have a vacuum truck to go through the manhole and suck all this stuff?
We'd have to hire, we'd have to hire.
So they don't have it, so it is gonna cost us something. Correct?
Correct, if we have to go in there and do some repairs.
Well, then it is, you might have to go in there once a month, it says. This might not, it's like, once a month for the first six months. And then typical maintenance schedules after that every sixty days.
But they said they were gonna handle it for the first seventy years?
No, they don't say.
It'd be so nice they could come explain some of this.
Yeah, that's why.
I mean, if it clogs up, it's gonna cause the highway a problem, so they're gonna be the ones to fix it or make it drink.
Yes.
Yeah, we want suction.
I know what they do.
The oil and other to break through the manholes and the top of the unit, which we already got some manholes missing down and all that.
We could ask Gulfport's assistance, they got one.
They have one.
They do?
Yeah, they do have one. It's, it's sucked out the drain right from our office a couple of times. But that's Lee's, I'm saying.
We can, we can, we have a, a motion in second, we'll be able to.
Well, I'm basing it on Chuck's recommendation, if he's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I'm just going on record and saying it's not costing us something. And we're gonna be stuck with the maintenance.
Well, look, well, the way it is right now, we're gonna have to spend a lot of money on that open channel to get it fixed. So I think this would be a far, the cheaper route to go. And it might look good.
Any further discussion?
You can't fall into it.
No.
Well, you can, but it won't hurt.
It won't hurt.
Instead of those boards, if they look at those grates, there's metal grates.
Metal, I'll show it to you.
If they, you could get some that are metal, but they're coated with, anyway. We have a motion second, I'll, and we have a discussion, all those in favor saying aye. I'll oppose motion carried, number forty-nine. Order excepting the local from Navy Royce Incorporated the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars from, for the Jim Simpson Pier repair, the damage caused by a tropical storm, first of all, as recommended by G M A Project Engineer Dex Alexander and Center Beach Director Chuck Lawton, and authorizing the board president to execute the contract upon receipt after review by the board correct, or attorney. Put a motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion.
That's one more. Chuck, do you have any idea, and I'm throwing this out, you didn't have a chance to research it, how much money have we spent on repairs to Jim Simpson Pier for whatever reason, tropical storm, whatever?
I know the last time was over, a little over a hundred thousand, so this is one thirty, I think, probably. I'd say close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe, one fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Much as the pier itself probably costs, if you were to build one like it now. You have any idea, Ruffin?
Close to maybe.
The reason that I'm asking, at some point, we said, we need to do something, I think Tim alluded to something, that they do in Orange Beach with these piers, Tim, that reduces the cost, uh, damage to your.
But I'm not sure if we can do it to this one that's already existing.
Right.
Problem is, um, people wanted us to raise the pier in mitigations, they wanted it to go up in the air like sixteen feet. You only have, that's the deepest point, four foot of water at the very end of that pier. So going up that high would just be ridiculous, it wouldn't be feasible to do that.
And I think from experience, the higher the pier is from the border, the more likely it gets torn up. It seems like the lower ones.
Well, this.
Well, that's because the water goes over it before the wave action, like the wave action.
But this storm had, it came from up underneath and it slapped and removed a lot of the deck boards.
Are we getting any further assistance on that?
We have it so far, and I believe this pier was a three-strike year out, and I think the last time we did the repairs on it was the third time. So this one, I think this is gonna be.
This is it now.
This will be on us.
I don't know if we could use some sort of maybe Go Mesa funds that we have available to do something, I, I don't know. You have to talk to an engineer, how we could redesign or build a pier or do whatever we need to do to mitigate the damages of being incurred to these storms that we're getting, the causes of repairs that we're having to sustain.
Yeah, we, we have two piers, we have that one and the one at I-110. We didn't have that much damage to that pier. We had a few deck boards that came off, some of the light, but everything has already been repaired on that pier. We did it and we already took care of that ourselves. But this pier here, Jim Simpson, might be said, with the height of the pier, the wave action, the water comes up and it hits a pier. That's why they mitigated the toes, that we need to go higher, but we just didn't see it feasible with the depth of the water that we have there.
I don't know.
The Jim Simpson Pier?
Just a guess.
Long, twenty years?
Thank you, Tim.
No, I don't know. Feet long.
Oh, oh, that's true.
Three hundred, three to four?
Yeah, that's around four hundred feet.
We have extensions on it, so.
Then we put an extension on the end, just little piers, and we had some, we had some little pavions we put on it after the storms.
Is that, which, where's the damage coming from? Is it coming from the end of the pier or is it?
The whole one, the whole pier, the whole one.
It's just something that I think we need to look long term, maybe some way to mitigate these damages, because I, I don't know if the government's gonna continue to.
They might want us.
This is on us, more than she said.
We already hit the three strikes and we're gonna have to, this will be done ourselves.
It's just something either replacing it with Go Mesa funds or some other funds that we would reduce the damage due to these storms, because we're gonna be getting them.
Sure.
Before we accept this quote or in addition to this quote, do you want to have Mr. Royce look at another material or another design?
I don't know if there's any, if you're gonna repair, what are any of those, because I don't know if any material would make a difference, would it?
Well, the way, the way the water comes up through these grates as opposed to the boards.
At one time, the, before the last storm, it was this nail down, we went back and screwed the boards down, so maybe that helped out this time.
Could we tell by the damage on the piers?
Yeah, mostly, most of these are some of the older boards that weren't changed the last time, so these are older. So they're just failing.
Just telling you, it's something the county's gonna be dealing with now, far.
But you have to be able to retrofit it, not just.
Well, why don't you, we'll see if we can explore, because it, I don't think these, what I saw, the picture was these panels that that holds them.
That's it.
When the guy was saying it allowed the water to come up through, so it doesn't knock the boards, just get pounded and not pull the nail down.
We can go back to Brown and Mitchell. And still examine, to tell them to look at it and see if we can come up with a different, I'm sure it's gonna be at a higher price than this, and the county's gonna have to come up with the funds as it is.
If it's high price, we, we're gonna have to replace it anyway. Whatever they're designing right now is not working.
Yeah, like I said, this, the board, most of the boards that failed were the older ones, not that was changed.
Not screwed there.
They were, they were screwed and it was, was it from the last?
But in their, in their, in their design, that's just specified, that's put in specifications to screw it down.
Yeah, that, yeah.
The head is now.
And once the last time, when we replaced the deck boards the last storm, they did screw them down.
I'll find that email today, I'm gonna try to.
Okay, so would you want to go ahead and go forward with it and then?
Well, I don't.
And, and ask them to, you could tell them to.
Check with the C F T, are there other litigation ways to deal with the damages that we're certain?
And I can get back with you on that first meeting.
Yes, Chuck, is, is the pier closed?
Yes, it is. It calls every day, I'm sure.
And how do we go about looking into a Go Mesa request? Because maybe we could do the whole pier?
Go Mesa's already been, it's already, deadlines are past for this.
Come out future.
This round.
Yeah, we can look at it.
So maybe for next time, and if we can do his idea, we could do.
You know, it can be, uh, penny wise and pound foolish, I don't know if we need to look at long term, I, I, I don't even know probably the cost would be too, too much, but if you, for example, concrete piers and stuff like that, whether that would be a long-term.
Yeah, because that was part of the litigation, they wanted concrete piles instead of the wood piles that we have now.
And I suspect that's more costly, very much more costly, but it depends on how long we continue to do this.
Yeah, like the one, the pier we have at I-110, it's concrete piles.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, in, in long term, look at some funding sources to replace these old wooden piers, because we're gonna have to constantly dealing with this.
Yeah, I agree. We do receive, so we have a motion on this, do you have to ask, tangle it?
That's what I'm talking about, Pam, yes.
You want to tangle it until he can investigate?
I don't, I don't think we need to table this particular thing, I just think we need to look into the future and start thinking about these, these types of pier because we're gonna be, it's coming back in another year or two, gonna have the same situation for a little storm.
They have another storm.
Could be this year, could be again this year.
They're trying to get that pier open as quickly as possible, not go ahead and do the repairs.
We have a motion in second, we've had discussion, all those in favor saying aye. I'll oppose motion carried.
I'll get your report though on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, number fifty is order approve N D A Economic Development Highway Program Consulting Engineer Contract for project number D, D C D dash zero-zero-two-four, print receipts twenty-seven D, improvements, print receipts approved. To provide access to the community, wellness, comments and traditions between Harrison County and Brown and Mitchell and Alexander Incorporated and authorizing the board president to execute that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
What, what are you doing?
This is the, the additional monies that were made available through the Economic Development Highway Program for the, the conditions, veterans, goal lines, going to the veterans, nursing home.
Uh, the veterans.
This is, it's the access off of the road.
They already had the rhythm cut, definitely got to do it.
You mean, is that where they had the rhythm cut and they don't even have the road made yet?
Yeah, they had, it was groundbreaking, that was groundbreaking. Groundbreaking, all those in favor saying aye.
All those are doing.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty one is order authorized the program of Air Mar Services Incorporated for services listed. Motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number fifty two, discuss selection of cares acts proposed.
Uh, did y'all have a chance to grade your cares acts?
I think graded, I think my.
We've been, we've been kicking this thing around.
Yeah.
I'm prepared to make a motion, go ahead and accept stop, let's just plan and develop a district to contract with them and negotiate a contract, and all the cares act.
All second. We have a motion, second, discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. All right, uh, my, 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 this, uh, what, have been. Okay, we have a memorandum, it's order authorizing the board president to sign Mississippi Development Authority Community Services Division Economic Development Jobs Report for Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Nursing School. Did y'all hear that? Did y'all get your name?
Sorry, say that again.
Say that again.
Really?
No, just, I'm sorry. Order authorizing the board president to sign the Mississippi Development Authority Community Services Division Economic Development Jobs Report for Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Nursing School. I think it's a technical.
Now, how are we gonna know that we can't charge it for a gig?
Because it says everyone here, prior zero, number committed new jobs twenty three, number of needed jobs is twenty three, and the number of present employees is twenty, uh, twenty.
We're not assuming any kind of liability with those job descriptions. As for example, in the CBPG program, we're not, we're not assuming any liability if those job numbers aren't there, all. Under this particular, this is not a CBPG grant.
Or the NDA grant, what else?
Are we assuming any kind of responsibility?
I don't know, I just got it laid on my desk, so.
I know, but I'd look at the grant, but I think there is, if they don't create the jobs that represent.
It's got a deadline on it.
I'm a little concerned, I'm a little concerned.
Subject motion to table.
I'm a little concerned, I stuck the motion because I'm a little concerned that, you know, we already, we fixing to get burned, I guess, Tim, we can get, what was it out there?
Highlands.
Highlands with a CBPG grant. So I'm, I'm a little, we're serving as a conduit, but we're assuming liabilities, and I'd like to know if this one is somewhat similar.
I think you've already approved it, I'm watching, but I think.
Oh, we have?
Yeah, this is, this is the, just, this is the.
This is the job report that NDA requires for the development infrastructure program. So this is from, this is actually from a law firm.
It traditionally.
Yes, sir.
We did a, so if you don't make the job requirements grant, it could be a problem.
It, it, it could be, yes, sir.
But it's tradition.
Yes, this is not tradition, this is a nursing center, not tradition. Yes, sir.
But the county itself is assuming that was possible.
I think, I think the grant, as I recall it, I haven't looked at it in a while, the grant for the roadway.
Wait, 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 hold on, please, okay, come forward, give me your name and your.
No, you're fine, thank you, one's the board of Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District.
Okay, explain this, please.
Yes, ma'am, so this is the job report that is required for the grant of Mississippi Development Authority that we're administering.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And here's responsible, then why aren't you asking them to sign it?
Because whenever this grant was approved, the county, similar to other EDA projects, the county was the one that had to approve the adoption of the grant.
So we are on the.
The, the county was the one that signed up on it, yes, ma'am.
Potentially.
Where was that?
Potentially.
If we don't meet the.
Potentially, but this is with the Mississippi Development Authority, so I believe this is one of the last jobs reports that we actually wanted to do for this one.
But then, you have made, may have met all of their recommendations.
No. As I said, has the job creation requirement been completed? The answer is no.
The job creation, I presume, the, the, the creation of the jobs is not the actual construction of the roadway, but the nursing facility that, the roadway's uncertain.
For the community, yes, sir.
But we wind up, if, if, if I understand, Tim, and potentially, we wa, we wind up with the responsibility, but the junior college gets the benefit out of it.
Right.
Well, on the road grant, only we're allowed for the entire project because it came from different sources.
Yes, sir, that, this is.
But just the road grant.
Potentially on the road grant.
This is, this was a three hundred five.
I can't imagine it not creating twenty-three jobs.
Well. I support, I support it because I think that's a great thing, education and everything out there. I'm just pointing out that we're assuming some liabilities, because we're the conduit, the development, uh, economic development.
But we. This is the state agency, yes, sir, and this is something that's already been approved, this is just the standard reporting processes that they have.
Why would the county necessarily have to be the, the responsible party?
That grant was available to the county, and the county, the board agreed to apply for that grant for the roadways as part of that project. We already assumed liability.
It's not roadway.
Yes.
No, no, the, the grant was for the roadway.
The grant was for the roadway, we already proved it, and be honest with you, I didn't realize that when we approved that, that, that grant, that we were assuming responsibilities for the job creation.
Very similar to Highlands, and so there, in Highlands, we did it to see a gut for, because they didn't have the grant. Here, this was in the county, was a county project in the sense that.
Now, we only look for.
Yeah. Well, the community college did state when they were filling out this report that there was no problems anticipating creating a member of the jobs.
Right, I can imagine.
And, and most likely, most likely it will not happen, I'm just pointing out that we need to be careful or at least not, or at least understand what we're doing.
I think I'm pretty clear on.
Was, wasn't the grant, it was three hundred pounds?
Oh, the grant on that.
It's not on here, Pam, so I don't want to say it, because this was also only did the EDA and this was.
Yeah, the EDA was three hundred, probably approved it, so we already voted.
You already approved it.
Yeah, we already approved.
Yeah, this is just the saying that we will sign it next.
Most likely, we won't have a problem, but.
No, sir.
Yeah, this, this project, it's, it's, it's there, it's not a Highland, you gotta remember, Highland is just almost fake.
I understand.
There it is.
Yeah, I go back, I'm.
I think it's.
Supervisor, and it is a problem, and the one thing that we discussed is of the future, is incorporating certain callbacks with the beneficiary. So this, I mean, like you said, Highlands, y'all know that experience, but in the future, that could be a benefit that y'all could look at.
We, we incorporated in Highlands, they, they hold harmless identification agreement. Whether or not we can recover, that's a different issue, but we did include some callbacks in that.
So we do.
Once we realized that was a problem with the grant, we, we did do that out, whether or not holds up.
And potentially with Highlands, I tell them that we could ultimately get that property, the county.
Potentially, yes, now, certainly if they default to, to, the county, the roads would come back to the county, but we also put a identification, hold harmless agreement, where we can make a claim against them and potentially against the property.
And have we been in discussion with the YMC organization? Because they are very interested in attaining Hy, the Highlands property. You haven't heard about that? I'll, I'll give you their information, they, um, International Y M C A.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, they, they got turned down some degree, all the shit.
I sent y'all an email about that.
Did they get the total amount or was it just about all, all of it?
It was eighteen million and they did not, they got scratched.
Well, I know that Highlands was also applying for some type of funding, and I sent y'all an email about that, I got an emergency phone call, an anonymous source who wants to remain anonymous, who told me that they were fixing to kick Highlands off the list. I sent y'all an email, and I went ahead and sent an email to our senator saying, we want consideration. I, I don't know that, apparently it didn't get anything, it didn't get anything.
You're talking about putting funding, right?
The most recent funding.
I appreciate that, we, we throw good money out there.
Well, I was just worried about the county having to pay the money.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I.
That Highlands project one day will be a nice project, it's in a great location.
Let's get back to, if we can, though, let's get back to this.
My, 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 I'm not, I, I just want to bring that point up, I'm not opposed, we got, we in it, we got to do it.
I have a motion to table, don't ever throw.
I think we got the information there, but I, yeah.
So, uh, but that's the, we did the cares thing, and this was the addendum, right? Okay, so we're back to, we have a motion, second.
No, no, we're, we're, we should be through, so.
Back to zero. We have a motion, authorizing the board president to sign Mississippi, long as I'm not out there, no. They'll come looking for any money for me, but, uh, the board president to sign Mississippi Development Authority Content, Community Services Division Economic Development for Jobs Report for Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Nursing School. We have a motion?
Yes, motion.
Second, discussion, we've had that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. All right, dear, thank you, thank you, all right, so, um, let's go, let's start with Pam. Pam, do you have anything for executive session?
Oh, for executive session, yeah, we do.
We're done.
I have a.
I have, oh, did the cares act? Discuss. We are.
We did the cares act.
We did the cares act.
We did cares act.
Yes.
I just have one item for, um, the city of Biloxi, we had approved for them, um, it's for their special election on August, and they're using the Don Snyder Community Center, and right now, the air condition is not working properly where they do the actual, um, election. So they'd ask if they could borrow some portable ACs, and we do have them available, but if they don't get it fixed, because that's on August the fourth, so I don't even have permission to allow our, the use of our equipment.
Would they send the resolution from the city, because otherwise I don't think we could.
They did, they did on the elec, on the election equipment, but this would have to be sent back to them, so.
It's election.
But it's for the election.
For the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that, that's the electric power company election, a special election of the City Power franchise.
We need a request from the city council.
Yeah, they will, I mean, we just need to get it from them.
Ending, ending.
Ending.
I might write a champagne in there, receipt of a proper resolution.
We have a motion, second, second, discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Anything else, Pam? That's all. All right, uh, I know Tim's one of the ones, Mr. Supervisor.
I have, I have one thing, advertise county resources. This is people mission organization and church giving a, with an annual backpack. Kids go actually give away, if they, what they do is give up to two hundred kids, can go and do local school, backpacks and school supplies, and we support them in the past, I'd like to support them this year, but five hundred dollars, they have campus and a banner, to advertise county resources with the county.
What church is it, which one is that?
Please, I got this one. I just get one.
Okay, uh, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
Discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.
One more thing, uh, this is, I'll, item again, number two, earlier today, the young lady went up and got her, uh, insurance involved, and this is, after the insurance, it's only eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and nine dollars.
Now, she's gonna have to send something to Tim like we asked her to do.
I think it's.
Well, that's, 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 that's one right there.
I don't know why it would be that, let me deal with that first, and then, well, I, I just want to.
Yeah, because we are really past the permission to pay the difference, so.
Would it not be her deductible?
That, it doesn't make sense that it would be eight hundred dollars, three hundred.
She should be paying.
Right, she's here about that amount of deductible on it. I don't know where they.
Well, that's, apparently the deductible, five hundred deductible amount, this is the balance.
So, so.
They're gonna pay eight hundred and nine dollars, so, so, let me, let me find out, is that, that deductible should not be five hundred dollars, but I, let me find out, though. We'll, we'll, we'll deal with it, I'll make sure. They normally don't charge a five hundred dollar deductible, wouldn't you, though?
Yeah, I've got something similar to supervisor, I'm going to use the medical, the Catholic actual, Missionary Baptist Church requests a five hundred dollars, just goes by the way, three hundred and fifty kids, they're a five hundred one C three nonprofit, and I have their status in my office, so I'd like to make a motion, we are meant to advertise county resources, play on the radio, throughout the event, and a flyer.
Second, discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Um, this, I'm busy, no, it's, I'm. Timothy.
If you want to discuss that, uh, new laws that we had this morning, forgotten his name, Brian, against taxes, I was glad to discuss that in the second session as a matter of pending litigation.
We also have a, um, a pending, I have a pending, um, hospital, the, the, the.
Well, we don't have no health issue.
Yes, executive session.
So we need to discuss litigation strategy in the second session.
All right. Share.
Yeah, the, uh, we need to discuss the, the governor's orders for the mask in courthouse. We, the only thing that we can enforce, and Tim, you tell me if I'm wrong in all of this or not, but I believe, I, you know, believe I'm right, the only thing we can enforce is that both the courthouses and the jail. Um, we can't enforce private businesses, um, Lowe's or Home Depot, I'm just using those as, as example, but we can't enforce that. We, you know, the, he even said that the, the groups of twenty or more, groups of ten or more in, in open public, um, it's too hard to enforce, you can't, there's, there's no possible way to, to do that. An example that I gave was, you go to the beach, and there's, there's twenty-five people there, do you write the five people that got their last tickets? Or do you, and you're separated, by the time you're gonna get there, they're separated, so you can't, you can't determine by that unless you make everybody freeze to take measure out. So it's, it's something that's unenforceable, but we can enforce the courthouses and I can enforce the jail. So my suggestion is, is this, I have the, the placards, um, that are upstairs at the, at the government courthouse, and we have them here, and I'm gonna get some signs made, and basically what they're gonna say is, is, um, hang on a second, I'll read it to you.
Has Timmy signed, we're gonna make these for this year in our Instagram?
No, I'm gonna get somebody else to make, I mean, it's not much, um, all employees.
We can do it for free.
What's that?
For free.
I don't feel like waiting, I, I mean, I'm gonna.
He's got a bigger.
They can do it today, I mean, they do it like that.
Uh, all employees and visitors must wear a face mask or a protective face covering, that's it, it doesn't, doesn't list anything.
Is it five or anything on that?
They put employees in here.
Employees and visitors.
There's a, there's a violation statute for violating these executive orders, I think it's a five hundred, I thought it was a five hundred, all five hundred, six months in jail, and in his order, he refers to that violation statute, so you could charge somebody, but what, uh, sheriff was talking about is the practicality of proven, when you got eleven people.
Yeah, that's.
It came in inside.
Which one is killing.
It's just, and he said it, he said it, you know, when he.
He did, he did say that.
So he did, he, he said, so it's, it's something that I, I don't think is gonna happen, I'm getting a bar with emails, you know, saying you're gonna charge. Yes, a person can be charged with it, do I, I think Herman would have a script when he got a ticket, yeah, I think he would, but, um, but it's just not something that, that can be enforced other than in a, in the courthouses or the jails, it's, it's not something we can enforce at a private company or private business.
You, you probably, I mean, it'd be very difficult, he's right, you got, say, eleven people in a room, and you walk in and say you got eleven, somebody's gotta leave, and one of them refuses to leave, it's like we.
He'd be the one who writes the ticket to, yes.
Yeah, we, we jest in the sense that the one that gives you lip is the one that usually gets arrested. But, but that's a very difficult thing to enforce, but the sheriff could say, okay, one's gotta leave, or y'all gonna get charged.
You do have the authority to break it up. You do have the authority to break up.
He does have the authority to break up the whole beat.
Yes, we do.
You can break the whole beat shut down, or you're.
Right, but you, but, but, just as Tim's saying, the, it actually happening, and somebody getting a ticket written?
Yeah.
It is, you know, a few or more between, it's not, probably not going to happen, but, um, I think we can verbally, discuss the situation where people will, will, will dis- dismantle or whatever they're doing.
And if, uh, if one of them gives you lip, then they go, they may have a little problem, and.
But anyway, I am going to get the sign made for that courthouse, and, and sheriff's office has been enforced coming into the courthouse and to the jail, uh, with, with face masks.
And, um, if they come in without masks, would you give them one? I mean, then they could make their way down, if, if they stop in our office, I think we'd have one maybe available.
Right, Wiggins, if you're bringing me some of theirs from the red department, they will put them in their, their entrances.
Especially on criminal cases, they're trying to get a student to the judge, we need to make sure we come back, you know, have a problem.
What about Justice Court Building and other, as I, you were sharing, you.
Justice Court, yeah, but, but, yeah, we'll, we'll enforce that as well, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, U Court, Justice Court, kind of those.
Okay.
Everywhere that I have somebody at, we're going to take care of.
One matter, not for the second session. One more matter, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Borries, the estimate on his, uh, Liz, Liz parent, or it's called, got on the internet and found it. It's even got a picture, you'll see the.
Oh.
This is what I saw on, this may be.
This is Liz when she.
Say that, I will. Oh, you're going to keep her.
This is a picture showing the water.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine.
Is that on Jim's, up from here?
No, no, this is, this is what's.
Oh, oh, what? The beach, that. Okay, got you.
There's a digger here, Gutford.
We should.
Oh, who is it?
Reddit, yeah, fact, fact.
That's cool.
It kind of got.
Okay, that was a great thought.
Like, is it? Plastics? Same as what is on the, who's the.
I mean, what you could do.
The D I A, the, the pass center?
Yes.
And that's a great.
Like a grape.
I mean, what you could try is just to repair the pier you got with those panel.
That's what I was thinking, that's nothing. Repair the pier that, that work of those right now, and see if it works.
That's, um, that's what I'm saying, there might be some ways to mitigate damages.
So, if you approve the Borries, you can go back and rescind that approval and ask Boris to give an estimate.
On these graves.
Using those graves.
Right.
In the areas that they can use them, because some of them may not fit, depending on how you're repairing it, but if you use them here, then the next storm, you might be able to see a difference. See if it works. They say it works in Orange Beach on the website they were talking about.
So, we need to, uh.
You'd have to. Was that the?
I've got, I've got it right here. I'm number forty-nine, order accepted, both of the floor, J E Ori and Torres, in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars, or Jensen's in there. Fear repair and damages by tropical storm, uh, Cristobal, is recommended by Brandon Mitchell and Alexander, project engineer, Dax Engineer, Dax, as director in San Beach, Director Chuck, well, it's not, it's more press, it's keep contract, we want to rescind that, we have a motion to rescind.
Right.
Motion second, second, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries, we want to do what they do. The exact same, we want to make a motion to, um, uh, use, investigate a cost of.
Oh, you need a motion to that, I think.
We got a warrant to Boris, right?
You don't have to, it's on quotes, but I would ask him for, first I do want to ask him for, for using that material.
Yeah.
Substitute that material.
So, a motion to ask Boris to substitute this material and resubmit this.
What about that?
I have a motion, and the second discussion, all those, I have a session. Wouldn't they, wouldn't they have to go out for bed again?
No, no, it's over fifty.
You have to have two quotes, one's over five thousand bucks.
So, you got two quotes.
But he needs to, whoever had that second quote, he should have that same.
I think, I think, I think she should be.
Maybe they're changing the.
It won't hurt to get two quotes, just to use this alternative material, not, not necessarily that, and, you know, maybe, there may be some others out there.
Yeah.
I, I just think it would be interesting to see if the, you repaired it, and then the next storm does it stay versus the material.
It seems like appropriate place, go Brown and Mitchell, and ask them to look at alternatives, including this.
That's, that's what I'm saying, because they have to write the specifications, they're going to change the specifications.
But you know, I'm a parent, I'm not a needed engineer, I just got quotes on my home. Although I did have, Bernie did have my engineer some because of it.
And you guys probably did that professionally.
Yeah, but the name is kind of.
Think it's not going to pay anymore.
So, I, I agree with Mark, that we make a motion to ask Brandon Mitchell to, um, redesign using this material.
Can I make a suggestion, because a good point everyone makes is that the reason we had Brandon Mitchell was probably because it seemed more polite. Now, why Chuck couldn't get the same quotes using, asking for additional material, because these people that built here have no more about building than me, but I don't need an engineer. Brandon Mitchell out, it just seems like an unnecessary expense.
Well, we got this bags, we're just substituting this material for.
That's right.
Well, that might require different stringers and all kinds of stuff.
Well, you're just going to see a difference in price, if it's too expensive, he might decide not to do it.
Well, I imagine it's going to be a little pricey.
Yeah, anything made of that composite, composite material, so we may overfit.
It's like, no, no, it's like that composite material they make the boards out of.
Like a hard.
Like a composite plastic.
It doesn't, it fades, it fades in years.
It's hard, hard.
It can walk on?
Yeah.
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 Those.
Some of the ones in Orange Beach were.
It's similar.
No, no, they're, they're that same material and pictures I saw, I mean, that's what it looks like, I have to get them.
I might have used it, stringers or whatever, but they were having aluminum involved.
Yeah. Well, I was, it's a similar, 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 you want Brandon Mitchell to do it, or?
Oh, I don't care.
Oh, San Beach.
We can get, I mean, I'm actually. The God bless you.
Okay, I, I need clarification, we're not getting confused at this point. Okay, we already sent Brandon Mitchell or the, or the San Beach Director to ask for two new quotes with the new material. I need a question, I need two hundred.
I would ask the San Beach Director to get two new quotes using this new material, same specs, new material, I don't make that motion.
Because like you mentioned, being engineered draw.
We have a motion and a second, it's a discussion, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries. Okay, so, we need the motion to.
Tim, what you say, what was it again?
They say it's potential litigation, all of the.
And.
You don't help.
And Brian.
And Brian, and, uh.
We talked, have we talked, have we talked about?
The one you appointed, so, we talked, no help. The one you appointed on our.
I'd rather have one other item, it was really great, thank you, let's wait, we'll come back. Um, they, they, we were sending a letter last week, I think, I should have got a copy from Gulf Coast Interior. It's a group, used to be a mad association group, but it does, they do the driver's license reinstating that to do the class. She asked for to use the E O C room in the boardroom, they do it on, uh, every, once a month on Wednesday, the second Wednesday. But I had already told, you know, I can tell them that we couldn't do it based on the numbers and all that, because it's over twenty.
Right.
And these other two groups apparently got approval from E O C to use their E O C room because they had under ten, you know, they had. And I said, well, I wasn't aware of that, I wasn't, I haven't approved anybody to use after hours, so I just wanted to make sure that in telling everybody, we're not allowing anybody to use the facilities after hours due to the code of numbers.
So, I'll put that in the form of a motion, without explicit permission from the board of supervisors, they cannot use the buildings after hours without explicit permission from the board of supervisors.
And we have a motion, we're the second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, and for second motion, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries.
Now, a motion is going to co-sess and discuss the move on to executive session.
Yeah, motion.
To.
Move to six, we have a second, second, a motion, second, discussion, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries.
If you want to just suspense with that, both of them are litigation matters, clearly, one's potential litigation, one's pending litigation. Both of them.
Then a motion, second, I have to discuss, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries. We have a move for our.
Can we come to you in here?
Yeah, we have a motion, second, all those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, vice president. Mark, okay, uh, will you give us a report?
In the court of justice, the board discussed two matters, one pending litigation failure versus the Texas Justice Office, and the second matter involved in the potential litigation law, and they got, no, so, no actual taken.
And, and, thank you very much, do we have a motion?
Motion to.
Adjourned.
Second.
No. Second. All those who voted, see, by Saint Island, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you.